Welcome, West Orange, to our Tuesday, September 8, 2020, West Orange Virtual Town Council Virtual Meeting. We hope everyone had a great summer. We hope you enjoyed your Labor Day, and we cannot believe the fall is here already. We start off very optimistic tonight. We haven't had since the last meeting. Thank God, we haven't had anyone pass from the COVID. The past couple of days have been great with hardly any cases, and so please keep wearing your mask, West Orange. It is working, and we're going to be hopefully on the mend soon. So if everybody continues to work together. Tonight, we wanted, we were hoping, I was hoping to have a presentation in public for our guests that are here this evening with us.
Council President?
Yes.
I have to do the opening statement?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, madam.
That's okay. That's okay.
Madam Clerk, go ahead. Do your thing.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7, 2019. Councilman Guarino?
President.
Councilman Krokowiak?
Yeah, is he on travel? It looks like he may have dropped off. Hold on one second. Let me see if I can see where he went. I'm hoping that he is signing back.
He's muted.
It's different than that. It's more than that. He was on two devices, and he dropped off the one device that had the video.
Yeah, okay.
So he's actually on, but we just need him to reconnect himself. John, I don't know if you can hear me, but if you can drop out of the meeting and then drop back on using the link.
I'll continue with the roll call. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Castellino?
Present. Okay, when councilman comes back in, you could just note his attendance then.
Okay.
Lauren, just let us know when he's back in, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So we're still here on our virtual meetings and not in council chambers. So I wanted to make sure before the school year started that we got this recognition tonight. Last March, when we left council chambers, we had scheduled a special guest. We have Sandra Guerra from our former senior at West Orange High School, current alumni, and now a college freshman at Jersey City College. She had made school history last March, and March, as most of you know, is Women's Month and would have been a great recognition then, so we wanted to honor her this evening. Sandra was, for 10 years, she had wrestled, and when the wrestling team had started out about two years ago, West Orange High School, she was instrumental. She had, March 7, she had went to Atlantic City, and she was in the New Jersey School Scholastic Athletic Association, also known as NJSI AA tournament. And she made school history by winning that championship and winning that tournament. So we want to congratulate her on her feet. We want to, we also want to talk about some of her details in her career. And with no further ado, we have a guest this evening, her coach, Stefan Zekella, from West Orange High School. Coach Zekella, hello there this evening.
Good, great. Thanks for having us on today.
Yeah, we're so happy. I know when Sandra defeated her opponent, now Sandra was undefeated this last year. She won 22-0, and her opponent from Lower Cape May, Joelle Klein, was also undefeated, and she won that match at 7-0. So before we introduce Sandra and to congratulate her on the air, I'd just like for you to give a little background and how instrumental she has been to the West Orange High School Wrestling Program.
You know, I can't in just this brief time capture the essence of Sandy and her impact on our wrestling program and certainly on the girls. I can tell you, when her and Daniela came into our program a couple of years ago as freshmen, it was just them two. And this year, we had 21 girls compete with the boys in our wrestling room every single day, and the girls were so passionate. They were just amazing to coach. And really, Sandy and Daniela had really paved the way. I call them trailblazers and pioneers, and both of them made it to the state finals. And I don't know if I could even describe the environment, but there's, at the state finals, there's roughly about 10,000 to 12,000 people, all eyes on that center mat. And, you know, and as a matter of fact, Precious, and I'll talk a little bit about her in a brief moment, too. She's the girl flexing in the middle of Daniela and Sandy. But they, all three of them, had made it to the state finals. It's just such, this is an era that will be talked about for decades, how lucky we were to have these three girls on the team at one time. But Sandy was our veteran wrestler. She's the girl who's done it for 10 years, and her parents got her into it. She got involved into Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, where she's an instructor, and they got her into wrestling. And just, this is what's great about West Orange. Our rec program, you know, brought her in with open arms, and it took her to our middle school program and in the high school program. And really, she flourished at the high school program. And, I mean, I could sit here and throw a lot of stats at your way, but I could tell you that her, probably her greatest moment was when she placed fourth in the states last year and fell short, because that moment really catapulted her to the state championship. And that girl, Joelle Klein, she played football. She was as dominant in her season as Sandy, and they clashed in the finals, and Sandy beat her 7-1. And it was like such a relief, a great moment, and all things that went up through all of her years, the support that she received from her family, from the coaches along the way, and certainly her sisters and brothers that wrestled alongside her meant all the difference. And when she did that, I never said that before, and I was a little worried, but, man, she executed, and she just did such a, she executed a wonderful wrestling match, and it was just a great combination to a wonderful wrestling career. You know, for her to have the accomplishments that she had, it just goes to show what kind of a person she is. Now, we had three captains this year, and they were captains of our boys and girls, and we had, you know, we finished with over 40 wrestlers. Two of them were girls. We had one boy captain, and for the first time ever, we had girl captains, and that was Sandy and Daniela.
Oh, that is wonderful. That is wonderful. And also, from what I read here, Precious, she was a first-year wrestler and senior that took to the sport very quickly.
Yeah, what an athlete she is. She came out, and of course, Sandy recruited her with, you see all those girls down there? There were 13 girls that competed at the North Jersey Regional Tournament, covering 172 teams or schools, and we placed second. And we had the most participants, we had 13 postseason participants, and Precious really didn't know what wrestling was a few months prior, but working out with Sandy, day in and day out, we say champions come in pairs, they were both champions that day. They won the regional, North Region, and they both went on to the state finals. And honestly, what Precious did is equally as impressive as any feat that I've seen in high school sports, for her in her first year, to get down to the state finals and lose to a girl who's ranked in the nation in a pretty close match was just so impressive.
Well, I'm so excited that they were able to get the tournament in, because as we all know, the weekend after, everything had shut down within the state. So, and that's why we weren't able to bring the Lady Mountaineers into council chambers. So thank you, Coach, for that background on your wrestlers. And I'd like for Sandy to come on and to say hello to there.
Hi, guys.
Hey, Sandy, how are you?
Good. How are you?
So congratulations, first of all, a very long overdue congratulations. It's been almost seven months. Who could believe?
Yeah, it went quite fast.
So if you want to tell us a little bit about your experience with West Orange High School Wrestling, that would be great.
Yeah, so I started wrestling when I was eight years old, and I started in the rec program. I was one of two girls on the team, and it wasn't really a big deal when we're little, because, you know, it's pre-puberty. And then, once middle school hit, girls hit puberty for boys, so I was like manhandling all these little kids when I was 12 years old, which was a lot of fun. And then, high school, obviously, it's a little different. The boys get strong without trying, which is unfair, but whatever. So I was like, you know what? I don't know. It's a lot tougher in high school. My first two years, I wrestled JV with the boys, because there was really no other girls to wrestle. And then, my junior year, they sanctioned women's wrestling in New Jersey, which was amazing. I mean, I'm so happy I got that chance. I got two chances to go to state, so it was a lot of fun. I'm glad I made it.
And now tell us where you're at today, starting off with your college career.
Yeah, so I committed to New Jersey City University, and it's the first year they're having a wrestling program, boys and women's. Actually, they just added it this year, and they actually just announced me as captain about a week ago, which was really cool, too. So I'm excited about that. Thank you so much. And I should be meeting them on Friday, hopefully, for the first time, so I'm excited.
Well, we hope that you're going to be able to wrestle this season. I'm not sure what is going to happen with the sport in the winter, even if they push it to the spring, but we hope you get that opportunity to start off at Jersey City. And I have to say, the reason why I wanted to bring you in and recognize your fellow teammates, because Women's Month is important. It's important to recognize strong, independent women. And yourself, your team have showed that with wrestling is not an easy sport. It's very dedicated. It's very disciplined. And you have shown tremendous, and all of the ladies have shown tremendous strength. And I know the program itself, for so many years, I know it's one big family. And Coach, family never graduates, correct?
That's right. These girls are, they're forced to be a part of my life for as long as I live. So I know that might not make Sandy too hot now, but they're really, they mean the world to our program. And like I said, these girls, for what they did, and Sandy, for what she is going to do and take to New Jersey City University and beyond, it just means a lot to us as her coach and somebody that was there along her journey. But they're really special. And, you know, I did want to say this, that, you know, Daniela made it to the states as well. As a junior, she made it to the state finals, and she beat two boys in a state sectional final in a match. She beat a boy by more than 15 points and put us right in a match where we could have vied for a state championship. But these girls are the best kept secret in sports. They came into wrestling, and I'll tell you, in a male-dominated sport like wrestling, a lot of coaches are apprehensive, and they don't want to bring on the girls into their program. I mean, it is, if you ask anybody, they love the wrestlers, the girl wrestlers. They love, after every single match, they just embrace all that's good in athletics and sportsmanship. And Sandy was our best ambassador. I'm telling you, we had 21 girls. She was probably responsible for 16 or 17 of them. She's such a special person, and, you know, a great student as well. So we were blessed to have her and her family a part of our wrestling program. As a matter of fact, her cousin is wrestling for us, and he was top 16 in the state. So her impact in West Orange Wrestling will be felt for a long time. So thank you, Sandy, for everything.
Thanks, E.
Well, we thank you. We congratulate you, and we hope to see you back in town. And I know your family does have the, hi, Dad. I know they've been instrumental this summer with helping with some daycare with some parents, trying to get back to work and helping out with the COVID, and we thank you for that as well. So we have a citation that will be delivered to you this week from the township, and I'm so glad that you were able to be available tonight. We really appreciate your change in your schedule. And I was so hoping to do it in person, so we apologize for the delay. But who would have thought, last March, we'd still be here in computer land with our council meetings. So thank you very, and great, good luck this year with the school. You're welcome. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Captain Garrara, I want to say, Council President, just want to say that-
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead. I'll let my colleagues say, I was going to wait till it was to their report, but you go ahead. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Some of the words that I heard, Coach Zekella, and I'm a big fan of our, well, obviously, West Orange, but our school district, our sports, Coach Zekella is someone, as you all know, just committed and dedicated to our students, and it helps just bring out the best in our kids. And there's nothing but love. So, Coach Zekella, thank you for all that you do for our students and our community. Captain Garrara, wow. Some of the words that I heard, impact, trailblazer, you are literally a game changer. That is really inspirational. Your strength and your commitment is obvious and evident in the passion in recruiting your other sisters to come along and join. And that's got to be one powerful space to be in, because I've watched some wrestling matches, and I've watched them like this. Congratulations to you and to your parents.
Thank you so much.
An amazing act.
Council President?
Yeah, I'll go. Go ahead, Councilwoman Guarino.
Thank you. Sandra, I just want to say, we hope you, remember, West Orange is your home, so we hope you come back and you take over the wrestling program and make it, you know, build upon what Coach Zekella did. You and your parents should be very proud of yourself. You're what makes West Orange the great town it is. And, you know, we wish you continued success in your sport. We wish you continued success in your college years and all that. And do remember, you have your family here, especially all of us on the council. We're here in West Orange, and we are just so very, very proud of you. And like I said, I expect you back in West Orange to take over the wrestling program. Sorry, Coach.
And Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, thank you. Coach Zekella, thank you again for another well-rounded student. You did mention what a good student, but just looking at this collage of pictures, look how proud her teammates are. Then, look how adorable she is on the bottom right. And then, look how intimidating she looks in that picture. I just think, we think the world of wonderful statistics that you have. And I don't know if you can compete with that flex picture, but just all the best and good luck in your upcoming school year.
Thank you so much.
And do we have Councilman Krokowiak back on, Lauren?
I don't know. Do we?
There he is. Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, I am so impressed. I know that wrestling is such a challenging sport, both physically and mentally, and to see that you've mastered that at this time is just remarkable. And just want to say congratulations and best wishes. Very inspirational.
Thanks. Thank you.
And again, thank you again. I really want to start off this meeting upbeat. We have so much to be happy for with, we're going in a positive direction health-wise these days. And thank you for coming on, because you are an inspiration to so many. And lots of luck. Thank you. And I'll let you and your dad could drop off, and Coach C, we need you for a few more minutes. Bye-bye.
Lisa.
Okay, great. So I asked Coach Zekella to stay on, because he wears many hats for us at West Orange High School. He is also dean of students. And with schools starting up virtually for West Orange, and we're preparing our students to come in. So, Coach, if you could explain a little bit about how freshman orientation went this week at West Orange High School, as we could see on the screen?
Yeah, I think Coach, I'm sorry, Dr. Cascone reached out to us a couple of weeks ago and said that he wanted to have some kind of an in-person orientation for all the new students coming into their schools. And we thought, like, how can we make this happen in such a short time? And, you know, we did. Mr. Moore, kind of, he and I and Ms. Connors got together, and we laid out what the plan was to try to bring our students in, in as safe of a environment as possible, and run our normal program, which is to help our students acclimate to West Orange High School, help them with that first step, and then also make that connection with our mentorship program, which we have over 100 spectacular junior and senior successful students that they're very high achieving, that could help them along their freshman years, and also for transfer students along their first year at West Orange High School. So we made that happen, and it was just fantastic. We had over 300 freshmen come out, and we broke it into six sessions, and they all wore the masks. They were all so excited to be with their peers and interact in the environment that we did. We took them for a tour around the campus and even inside with one-way hallways and just really showing them, keeping socially distant, and showing them what's so great about West Orange High School and our beautiful campus and facilities. And it was really a special week. I know that Dr. Cascone came out and spoke to the students as well as Mr. Moore, and they were really proud, and so was I, to be a part of it. But just the interaction between the mentors and their mentees, the freshmen and the transfer students, was really, was really nice. I mean, being virtual in almost everything that we do, to see it face-to-face, and to see them at first, a little shy, and then start to really open up and make that connection was special.
Well, I appreciate you, you know, sticking around to explain that to us. It never ceases to amaze me, the work that goes in with our administration up at West Orange High School. I know our students will transition well when the time comes to coming back to the buildings, because that's, you know, that's what you do so well up there. And we appreciate that, keeping our students safe. I also like to give a shout out to our OEM Coordinator, Nick Allegrino. He had been instrumental with helping, assisting a lot of our families with Wi-Fi the past year, and also now starting up in September. So we appreciate all his efforts for working with Phil Santiago and the district. I had a meeting last week with Dr. Cascone and the task force. And just the preparation that the school district has to get done is a monumental task, and we appreciate all of your efforts in doing so to keep our students safe.
Can I give one shout out, too? We were hard pressed to get canopies and tents for our orientation. We needed 25. And just the community came out. We asked members of the community, staff members to come out. Coach Nevins gave us nine tents, and I actually reached out to Megan Brill, who handles, I guess, some events in the street fair. She was amazing. She lent us 10 tents, and we were able, and believe it or not, we got rained on for two of the days, but we were able to keep dry and socially distant because of the efforts of some of the town members. And I really want to thank Megan Brill and all the people at Coach Nevins and various community individuals that donated a tent. So it was special. It was great. It was needed. And I think we learned a lot from it, and I think it's going to get us back into our schools safely soon.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Coach. It's always a pleasure to see you and to chat with you. And we look forward to working with you, too, with the mentors, with Laura Van Dyke and Dorothy Sanders, with some events that they're going to work on with you, with our senior community. So thank you for all that you do.
Thanks for having me on. Thank you all for what you do for West Orange. It certainly is better because of your efforts. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Coach. Stay safe.
Thank you.
And now we are going to change gears. And Mr. Sayers, you're up. You have to follow that act with redevelopment report.
Unfortunately, I do not have a redevelopment report, because I tried to get in touch with Mr. Diaz today, and he did not return my call. So my guess is he's probably either out of state or out of the country. So I do not have any update right now, unfortunately. Sorry.
Okay. Is Mr. Trank on the call? Do we know what's going on with Central Avenue or Executive Drive? Do we have any reports there?
Mr. Trank? He said he was going to be on the call.
No, he came on.
Oh, he is?
Oh, he just needs to unmute. That might be a-
He told me he was going to be on the call.
No, he's on. I just need him to, I sent him a note to unmute and to start his video. He may be having some computer issues. Yeah, I have, you know, I can only-
Okay, we can always go back after liaison announcements.
I'm here. I'm sorry.
There goes. Come from.
Here he is. Hey, Rich.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Mr. Trank.
Michelle had a question for you.
Yeah, if you have any updates on Central Avenue redevelopment, how that's moving along, and Executive Drive?
So with regard to Central Avenue, Mr. Gross and I spoke with Mr. Alpert about a week ago, and I believe it's over 90% occupied already. If you recall, it's 55 are affordable, 55 of the 100 units are affordable, 45 are market. And notwithstanding COVID and whatnot, they've been very successful in getting both market and affordable. So it's a real community is coming alive. We are waiting, and what the mayor is hopeful, and we've been pressing, is that he will come in with his proposal with regard to what I'll call the Selecto Flashlight, where he's been named interim redeveloper. We were hoping to have that later this year. It'll obviously have to go to the planning board. But so that would be a third building, basically, the second one in West Orange. And that will also involve Tompkins, which we've had some unsuccessful luck on Tompkins in the past, and we're hopeful to have some units on Tompkins, which is just a couple of blocks from Central Avenue. With regard to Executive Drive, we're still waiting for the appellate division to provide its determination on the appeal that's been pending and was argued pre-COVID in March. We were expecting to hear by the end of August. We have not, so hopefully that resolution will be shortly. But the planning board has provided their final approvals by resolution that I think was adopted the first week in August that Councilwoman McCartney can comment on. But so basically, we've had a bunch of calls with the library involved. The library board is doing an amazing job in terms of trying to press its very competitive application under the Library Bond Act. And we believe those recommendations will go to the state legislature sometime in late September, which hopefully means we'll know more about that. They've submitted a substantial application, but it's very, very competitive, especially in light of the fact that the town is basically, as part of this redevelopment, going to be contributing, you know, the space at 10 Rooney. So again, the Dog Park is on, we've seen final drawings on that that have been approved by the board and the library, and everything is moving forward. If the litigation is resolved successfully, it is possible that they are going to try to break ground by early 2021.
Nice. Does any of my colleagues have any questions? Councilman Guarino?
No, I was just waiting, like, you know, when Mr. Sayers has a conversation with Mr. Diaz, I've asked to have a meeting with Mr. Diaz in accordance with the retail space down below at Edison Law. So I'm just waiting for a response. I read Mr. Sayers said he will get back to me. I had a conversation. So other than that, it's just exciting to hear, you know, development, Central Avenue, you know, Executive Drive, the whole thing, and everything's coming together. So thank you, Council President.
Councilman Krokowiak?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Sure. Councilwoman, I mean, Matute Brown? Councilwoman, I mean, Matu Brown?
Now, just thank you for that update. It's very exciting to hear about the almost full capacity over at our new building on Central Avenue and Executive Drive looking forward to the resolution so that we can move forward and hopefully we're all helping the library make sure that they are successful in their competitive application. I know it's a lot, but I'm hopeful that...
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time actually hearing you.
Me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're very, you're very low. I don't know if you get a little closer or just use that diaphragm and...
Let me get a little closer.
Use those pipes.
Just wanted to say thank you for that update. Very excited, looking forward to all the new development and all of our new residents that are joining us. As I was... Thank you.
Great. And Councilwoman McCartney?
Richard had made comment about the planning board. As you know, the Executive Drive study and plan was voted on the planning board and it was unanimous to move forward with that. So I too look forward to hearing about the litigation. Thank you for the updates. And just moving forward, more on the agenda tonight from the planning board will soon here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Mr. Trank, if you, when you check in, Mr. Alpert? I know we've been advocating to get Highland Avenue Station more opened up with some more train times. I know with the city being pretty much still shut down, that's probably not, this is going to happen later than sooner. So if you could just, when you get a chance, ask him if he's having any more conversations with New Jersey Transit.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, great. Council liaison reports. Councilman Magrino?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you. And of course, the wonderful West Orange Farmers Market, open every day, every Saturday, sorry, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM on 80 Main Street. And just to note, you know, Stacy and Rob and their son Finn are taking a well-deserved vacation this coming weekend. So it'll be up to Sean, Sage and myself to keep the farmers market up and going and we hope you all come down. We see many, many more residents and non-residents come out each Saturday to shop, to see the merchants, talk to them, learn what we've got down there. So every weekend, it's been even better. More and more people are venturing out and coming down to Main Street and making use of the farmers market. So we're really happy about that and very happy that Rob and Stacy and their son are taking a well-deserved, you know, weekend off to, you know, to recharge their batteries and then back to work the following week. Just another thing on, it'll be posted on Facebook and as an event, September 17th, from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM, there'll be a virtual meeting by New Jersey Transit for the Washington Street Neighborhood Virtual Tour to present their findings based upon the questions that were asked based upon their analysis and what they have been able to develop for the walkability to make, you know, Washington, that area more of a walkable, viable area for both the residents and especially the students. And again, of course, tomorrow night, our West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting held al fresco at the marching band field at West Orange High School under the lights. Thank you, Dr. Cascone and the West Orange Board of Education. We like keeping our meetings going since we cannot have them indoors. We're having them outdoors and it's been very appreciative of the Board of Education to, you know, allow us to use the field because now it's darker. We needed a field with lights and we didn't want to knock the recreation department off Soriano. So they let us have the marching band field, which is just below. So that's our meeting at 7:30 tomorrow night at the marching band field. We'll be going over a few things, particularly the Main Street Road Diet. And also at the next council meeting, I didn't get them in on time, there'll be presenting two resolutions to the Senate, to the state of New Jersey, to put additional sidewalks in on Mount Pleasant Avenue from Marion Drive down to Pleasant Valley Way and also to ask the Department of Transportation and highways to make improvements, particularly crosswalk improvements and pedestrian improvements to the entrance and exit for 280 on Pleasant Valley Way. So that'll be coming up at the next council meeting. Council President, the downtown alliance is still going strong. We hope people come out to our meetings to see what's going on. There are new vendors coming down, new coffee shops, the new bakeries. You know, a lot of the old stores are still open, they're open for business. And remember, you have to, you know, come to our merchants, shop West Orange, you know, show them you really care. You know, adopt a restaurant every week. Just pick one of your restaurants, Nicholas Anthony's, Patsy's, you know, Fertici Mo, you know, Pan of Air. You know, just go to one of those restaurants and adopt them and show them that you really care and you want to be there. Starlight Pizzeria, you know, the whole thing, you know, just go. And Julio's is like, you know, it's really exciting. Just, you know, show them that you care, you know, don't just always ask them for things. Show them that you want them to be there and so make every effort. And I call it, you know, Adopt Your Restaurant Week. Every week, pick a different room, you know, Italian, whatever, and just show them that you care because at the end of all this, we don't know how many restaurants will be able to survive the whole COVID-19. But the only way they are going to survive is that we show them that we're going to, you know, buy their product. You know, we're going to visit them and we're going to support them and tell our friends and family that, you know, they're here and they're open for business and we want them to stay open for business. The Oak Barrel, you know, these are just all the ones that we know. And as a good township, we need to support our merchants because these merchants have always been there when the schools and all the organizations, you know, have asked them for donations. Not one of these have ever said no. So now let's not say no to them. And, you know, Council President, it's just a very important thing that, you know, our residents need to know that, you know, adopt one of our merchants. They'll enjoy it, believe me, and the food is great at all the merchants that I mentioned. And so thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for all your hard work with the Pedestrian Safety Commission. Councilman Kukoviac?
The good news is that the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission is meeting even as we speak.
Nice.
News is that I can't be there, but I'll find out what happened and report at the next council meeting.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Okay, so just a couple of announcements for the municipal alliance. They were finally able to, the commissioners all voted to adopt the funds that were allocated, which this year unfortunately, because of all the cutbacks from the state, were reduced by 25%. Nevertheless, they were given $17,685 to be able to distribute amongst the programs, including the Boys and Girls Club of America, Raising Drug-Free Kids, Community Awareness, Cope Center Prevention. So I'm happy to see that the municipal alliance is actually really working hard to make sure that they designate those funds to those organizations in our community that can use them. And the Joint Insurance Commission met just a moment before this and I was happy to see two residents come on and share their concerns. And those matters were tabled, so there was no resolution there this evening, but looking forward to a resolution sooner than later. And then for the fun, the fun part, not that the rest of them are not fun, but OSPAC is... If you missed OSPAC's last cabaret at OSPAC, it was so much fun. We, it was a blast. We had so much fun singing, dancing, socially distanced. And I say that to say that, oh, and I remember when I got there with my husband, we parked all the way down at the end of the lot and I counted five parking spaces left. They had a lot of people and everyone was socially distanced. So I was happy to see that everyone was wearing masks. But if you want to have a little bit more fun, I think this time, Friday, September 25th, Motown for our town is going to be there and I'm looking forward to that. 7:30 PM, there is a wine garden. You must wear your mask, bring your chairs or blanket to get comfortable and plan for a lot of fun that evening because it's going to be great fun. And then October 2nd, the Comedy Under the Stars and October 10th is the Weaklings, which is the Beatles are going to be showcased during that October 10th date. There is an item for the OSPAC board on the agenda for this evening, so we'll talk more about that then. That's it for me, Council President.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman. I'm very excited for Motown. Councilwoman McCartney?
So thank you. I will ask everyone to visit the westorangearts.org website. We are in the process of applying for a general operating support grant, which was due next Tuesday. We have quite a long desk space here, so Joe is at the other end of this. My husband Joe is at the other end of this space. He's the treasurer for the Arts Council, putting on the finishing touches to update the operating budget. On the website, we are creating a full workshop schedule. So there's still, even though it's all on Zoom, there is still plenty of, plenty of events being planned and things going on. I see, well, my colleague Joe Kukoviac is the liaison to the Open Space Commission. But again, Joe, my husband Joe, is the chair. And with an environmental commission grant, we were able to put together a pollinator garden up at The Rock and at one out of eight various gardens to be designed up there. And so instead of having a Zoom meeting, they are going to have a meeting at The Rock tomorrow evening at 6:30. It's open to the public, plenty of space, six acres to maintain social distancing. And it says on our note, members of the public should bring their own chairs. So that's just to kick off the pollinator garden and the work that's being done up there. The Rent-A-House, the board will meet next Monday. We are going to discuss the Governor's Executive Order 183. Council President Cass Leno started the business task force and once that surfaced, that executive order, we got calls from the Rent-A-House wondering how that might apply to the exercise room in the senior housing. So we have, we have the Director of the Health Department weighing in and we will have that for a discussion on our, at our board meeting next week. The Environmental Commission, also very busy. So last spring, if you recall, the Township and the West Orange Environmental Commission received a grant from New Jersey American Water to clean up the west branch of the Wallway River from Vincent's Pond at Degnan Field over to Orange Reservoir behind McLooms. We have a West Orange scout, Sean Cox from Troop 6, took this on. He is spearheading a group of volunteers as his Eagle Community Service Project. So it's taking on a whole new life of its own. So we want to support his Eagle project. That will be this Saturday, starting at Degnan Pond at 10:30, Saturday, September 12th, right? If you go to the West Orange Environmental Commission Facebook page, you can sign up for all different options and all different sections along that, along the stream to help with the cleanup. And thanks to the DPW and the grant for supplying the trash picker-uppers and garbage bags and gloves and all the supplies that we're going to need for that. West Orange Chamber met at 8 o'clock this morning to go over, to discuss a possible networking outdoor meeting. People aren't, some people are not really ready to leave their comfort zone, so we're not really sure if that's going to work. But Board Member Arnie Amir continues to line up guest speakers for this 2.0 on very timely subjects and very relevant. So again, I ask you to visit westorangechamber.com for more information about our business community. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry, so I had mentioned that before about the planning board. So you know, we have an ordinance on our agenda this evening. We met last Wednesday, again, voted unanimously to make a recommendation to the council to update the sustainable checklist in our master plan to include solar and electric charging stations. So that's on for first reading this evening. Good news.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman. And thank you for mentioning the business meeting that you assisted me with and thank you to Megan Brill as well, she couldn't attend, but she helped with the invites. Yeah, the executive order 183, your local fitness centers are now open at 25% capacity. So I know I'm very excited to get rid of the coronavirus 15. So you have to enter them safely with your mask and you have to work out with a mask. But I really want to shout out to our health department for all our health officials, inspectors, for going to all of our fitness centers, walking them through all the regulations. When these regulations come out, you know, they're not easy to read through. There's a lot of requirements and they took the time to make sure they got to each one to make sure that they all set up and have what they need for their reopenings. And also to Chief Abbott and to Bill Keo, our rec director. Yeah, we've been trying to accommodate our brick and mortar businesses these past few months and we're going to continue to do so. The yoga grounds, they're still in the basketball court right next door to her and our officers were out there. We, she's going to put some lights up for when it starts to get dark now. We had our fire official talk to our restaurant owners as well in regards to outdoor heaters. So I'd like to thank our fire official, Highwell, for coming on the call and working individually with all our business owners. Way of the Tiger, we set them up in Lafayette Park. Max Fitness has been at Degnan, Retro was outside in their parking lot. So it's just teamwork, teamwork with all our township officials, our directors and the business owners with the business community. And I have to thank John McCain for coming on the call to give us insight and for advocating to the state for us. It's going to be tough. I mean, the restaurants will now be open, they are open at 25%. It may take people time to go frequent them, as Councilman Magrino had said earlier, but still try to visit them, whether it's delivery, takeout, pickup, if you still don't feel comfortable going in. They made lovely outdoor cafes. We're going to let them keep them as long as they would like. They want to put heaters out there, so people want to, you know, hang out and wait for a table inside in the fall. We're going to do whatever we can to keep them going because we want to show our support and we want to make sure we all get through this crisis together. So hopefully everyone continue to wear your mask when you frequent them and when you're out and about in town and hopefully maybe we'll see the capacity go up to 50% sooner than later and that would help them tremendously. So again, thank you, everyone. Great, great teamwork and, you know, we're just going to be there for them because that's what we do here in West Orange. We stay stronger together. So with that, Friday is with, you know, we've all been so busy thinking about COVID, families getting back to school. We don't, we're not having our usual remembrances and ceremonies. The county will still be holding virtual remembrance of that Eagle Rock. And I'm sure Anthony Puglisi comes on later, he'll give a little more details about it. But I just wanted to show this picture to just remind everyone, you know, what Friday is, September 11th, and to still remember all our first responders and all those who've been through and suffered. So, you know, just have a special remembrance in your hearts on September 11th. And with that, I think we are ready to go to the general meeting. So Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31st, 2019 and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7th, 2019. Councilman Magrino?
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac? Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Cassellino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So at this point in time, we are going to open up to the community for a public comment. Our moderator will recognize you and she will enter you into the meeting. When you do come on the meeting, if you could please state your full name and your address, you will get five minutes to address the council. And at the end of the time, when, after everyone speaks, the council will then respond. Okay, Madam Moderator.
Thank you very much. Yes, if you would like to speak, please use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Please note that you can hit that at any time, you do not have to wait for anyone to stop talking. And if you are one of our call-in attendees, it is star nine. So at this time, can we please have Gary Van Wick, please follow the prompt on your screen?
Can you hear us, Gary?
He's not unmuted yet.
Okay.
Could you just unmute yourself, Gary? There we go.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, how you doing?
Hello, greetings to everyone.
Okay, Gary, your name and your address, please, for the record.
Gary Van Wick, 71 Burnett Terrace.
Thank you, okay.
Well, this evening, I would like to address a few comments toward the issue of the tree ordinance.
Okay.
We are having first reading of that amendments to the ordinance tonight. Firstly, I would like to just give some context. For three years during 2017, 2018, and 2019, I've been involved in the Environmental Commission, attending the regular meetings, attempting to bring some new structure and vision to the tree ordinance. So I've been deeply engaged with this issue for at least three years. Also, with a legal background myself, I've taken a particular interest in the legal language pertaining to the ordinance, as well as numerous ordinances from other towns in New Jersey, looking at them as potential models for how to develop a sound environmental policy regarding trees in West Orange. I have to say that I'm delighted to see that the proposed amendments here require an advanced permit for the removal of all substantial trees. That's a great idea, but already in the existing ordinance, we do have the requirement for permits. And what we have seen over the last, I would say, 15 years that I've been living in town is that residents have managed to remove trees from their private property without getting permits that are already required in our existing ordinance. So yes, requiring an advanced permit is a great idea, but our chief problem still remains. How is that going to be enforced before the trees are cut down? What is the enforcement mechanism actually? Unless there are very substantial fines for doing that and an appropriate publicity campaign beforehand to, to tell people about the new rules, we're still going to lose the trees. And then what? You didn't get a permit, the tree's gone? What's the consequence? So the, the three-tree rule now being subject to a permit is great. However, the three-tree rule itself is rather arbitrary. It's something that Mayor Parisi has defended extremely strongly on the basis of property rights. But that three-tree rule is not something that we see in any other New Jersey jurisdiction or any other tree ordinance in other New Jersey towns. So the three-tree rule itself is certainly highly questionable. And I think before we go any further with amendments, we should indeed question that three-tree rule. Under 25.27 point, I think it's for AC2, the exemption for non-viable trees that they should be exempt from permitting is also problematic. The proposal here is that if you have a non-viable dying or dead tree, you can simply cut it down and then the forester will be able to inspect the stump and see whether what you've done is okay. Well, that's not really okay, because once you've cut down a tree and left a stump in the ground, how is anybody meant to determine whether or not that tree, which you've now cut down, might have been viable if it had been treated? That makes no sense at all. Dead and non-viable trees, of course, must be removed from any property, they are potentially dangerous. They also need a proper permit, they need supervision. They need the oversight of the forester to come and say, yes, your 100-year-old oak is definitely dead, it must come down. Or he will say, that 100-year-old oak looks a little sick, but I know if we do A and B and C, it might actually survive. So that clause is, is just not acceptable. It needs to be, you know, looked at carefully and amended.
Time is up? Thank, 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 thank you, Gary. And, you know, this is going, this is our first reading tonight, second reading at the next meeting. So what, any, all your recommendations, if you'd be so kind, is to send us all an email, that would be great. And make sure we look at each and every one of them, okay?
Well, may I just say that I've already sent all those recommendations to every member of council and to the mayor. There is a very detailed document that are the recommendations for amendments to the tree ordinance created at the request of Mike Brick, the Chair of the Environmental Council, and representing the views of three years of discussions in the Environmental Council, including the opinions of members of our Green West Orange and
And we will re, and we will revisit it, but thank you. I just want to, you know, got to keep to the time limit, but thank you. We will look at it. Okay, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Yes, Sally Malanga, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road, good evening.
Hi, Sally.
Hi. I'd like to thank you for making the change in the tree ordinance as described in the red line that you've got posted. There are some good changes there, however, there are two points I'd like to make. I'm asking you to eliminate the three-tree cutting exemption that Gary Van Wick was just mentioning, where anyone can cut three trees per year, no matter the size, no matter the health, no matter the history on their property. Because without this, it is a tree ordinance that doesn't really protect trees. We also need your attention to create a mechanism where the town engineer and the forester cannot cut healthy trees whenever there is roadwork or sidewalk repair. We've heard over the last several years, numerous residents speak out from various streets around town in despair, including now on Old Indian Road, that the forester has condemned healthy trees for removal when engineering can work around them. No healthy tree should be cut down for sidewalk, curb, or road repair. Remember, tall, stately trees provide shade, traffic calming, and a 15% increase in our property values. But I can assure you that members of our Green West Orange pay attention to this, and we're seeing trees coming down that nobody else is noticing, and they're big. I know that the mayor believes that it's a matter of property rights, that people should be able to cut down trees on their own property. But if one needs permits for fences, driveways, and additions, why not for trees? So I'm urging you to make this a model ordinance for tree protection by eliminating that three-tree exemption. Add some other things that are on our list of recommendations, like allow neighbors to have notice if someone wants to cut a major tree. And also, please investigate the incidences of our town forester and engineer being proponents of healthy tree cutting rather than tree preservation. It's causing great heartache and aggravation to many residents. And as I mentioned, right now, it's happening on Old Indian Road. I'm sure there's more repairs that will continue, and this will just upset more residents in the future. So thank you for taking this seriously, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
And David S., if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello. Hi. Hello, everybody, I'm David St. Louis. I live at 45 Lennox Terrace in West Orange, obviously. I just have a quick question, or was the problem, I'd like to, thing I'd like to address. It's the road from Northfield down east toward, toward the 280. On the way, when you get to Gregory and you're heading toward 280, there is, there's a lack of, of line, lane division. I found, I found that cars in front of me, cars beside me, and cars coming up the opposite way. If you're on the, the inside, not the outside, the inside of that lane going toward the 280, you're always pushed into incoming traffic by this car that's by the sidewalk, because there's no, you can't see the lines. They're always drifting further and further, pushing you into oncoming traffic. And I've seen other cars do it, I've had it done to myself, I've done it to other people. And I just want somebody to, if possible, take a look at that, because that's a, it's a problem in the making. It just needs to be taken care of as soon as possible. That's it.
Thank you so much, Mr. St. Louis. And hopefully, is, is Mr. Pagliisi Lauren on the call tonight? Okay, great, okay. Our, our representative from the county is on the call in Northfield Avenue, Beane County Road. Hopefully, he'd hope, he's taking notes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Take care.
Okay, thank you. And next, H. William Rutherford III, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
How you doing, Mr. Rutherford?
I'm great, thank you guys for taking my question.
I'm sorry, just your address for the record, please.
My address is 8 Hunt Place in West Orange.
Thank you, go ahead.
I'm calling to, well, asking about the public employees in town. I'm wondering if any of the council members are willing to meet with the unions, the various unions in town. And maybe you have already, so you can educate me if you have. But I'd like to know if you have either met already or are willing to meet with the union presidents to find ways to have them move out of either the private plan into the state plan. Or if that is not acceptable, are you willing to, when I'm talking about health insurance benefits? And if that's not acceptable, would you be willing to open up bidding or look into other private plans that may be able to save us money? I understand that we cannot make a move, and please correct me if I'm wrong, unless all seven unions agree. But I would like to know if any of you would be willing to take the lead on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. And Joyce, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Joyce, last name, please, and address.
Hi, good evening, this is Joyce Rudin, 38 Woodland Avenue. Hi, good evening, I hope everybody is well. I have been fighting for trees in town forever, it feels. And this summer in particular has been absolutely devastating as the coronavirus has raged, as, as West Orange's economy has tanked. Trees have been coming down. They've been coming down at the Moncler Country Club, at Redwood School, in neighborhoods throughout West Orange. It has been absolutely devastating. The changes that are being requested in the ordinance tonight may give the appearance of environmentalism, but they continue to allow for deforestation and zero enforcement. For instance, the permit in, in, in the ordinance, there is no permit regulation that requires the contractors to have the resident's permit in hand before cutting anything. This, in a sense, puts us as neighbors in the position of being enforcers. It is divisive and it sends a terrible message. We are being put in the position of choosing to destroy our good relations with our neighbors or watching our neighborhoods turn into parking lots. I urge you to go much further with this ordinance. Pull it for tonight, make it a strong ordinance that does not allow the continuation of deforestation, the tree, three-tree rule, which is just so arbitrary, as others have said, and put in strong enforcement for the community, which has been arguing and fighting for this for a very long time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Rudin.
Thank you. And Tammy Williams, if you can follow the prompt on your screen. Hey Tammy, you there?
She muted?
No, sometimes we have problems with Tammy's computer. She is unmuted, but unfortunately, I'm unable to. Hey Court, can you turn that down a little? Thanks.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, there you are.
Great, all right, all right. Tammy Williams, Hillside Avenue, good evening.
Hi there.
Hi, everybody. Um, thank you for this opportunity to greet the council and the residents of West Orange. Just wanted to remind everyone that September is suicide prevention month. And with that, just to bring awareness and prevention to our community so that we can save a life. We want everyone to know that tomorrow, September the 10th, I'm sorry, on Thursday, September the 10th, is World Suicide Prevention Day. And we are encouraging all of those in our community that have been impacted by suicide to light a candle on your front porch, just to bring awareness and to unite our community in solidarity to prevent additional suicides in our community and the world in general. So just wanted to make that acknowledgement. You know, we have been impacted just this year by a terrible loss from suicide. And our community has done a tremendous amount of work from our schools, from the West Orange Stop Suicide advocacy coalition, to bring awareness to this subject. And I just want everyone to know that this is very important. And as long as we know the signs and the symptoms, we can always save a life, suicide is preventable. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tammy.
Thank you. Okay. And at this time, do we have anyone else of our public before I get to Mr. Pagliisi, who would like to speak? It's the Raise Your Hand function, the bottom middle of your screen. Okay, with that, Mr. Pagliisi, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, this is Anthony Pagliisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. I was listening before, so in response to Mr. St. Louis's comment about Northfield Avenue.
Right.
We emailed our Public Works Department, asking them what the timeline is on when Northfield Avenue could be restripped.
Great, thank you so much.
I guess my main topics of conversation over the last few months have been testing sites and food distribution events.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, I was a little remiss, and I didn't send you any And unfortunately, I was a little remiss, and I didn't send you any flyers this week. But those things are occurring. And let me just back up a little bit with the food distribution program. Back on August 27th, we partnered with Life Christian Church, which was a very successful event. And it was unique in that we were able to provide fresh produce to residents who came, in addition to the non-perishable boxes. And that was because the church was able to secure a donation of the produce. So it was a great partnership. We were able to add some considerable value to what residents have already been receiving for the last, actually, five months, as I was looking at our schedule of events earlier today. And actually, that event on August 27th was the third time we were in West Orange. We were at Cody Arena early on, then we were at Colgate Park. And of all the municipalities in Essex County behind Newark, we've been to West Orange the most.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that, Mr. Pagliisi.
And I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but each time we're in West Orange, the events are successful in the fact that there's always more than enough people that come, which is, like I said, a good thing and a bad thing.
Yeah.
So there is the commitment by the county executive to continue these events. And if an opportunity arises to return to West Orange, I think we'll definitely look at that very seriously. Again, the testing program is continuing as well. We've kind of tweaked the schedule a little bit. Up until now, we've been doing three days a week in Weekwake Park. And then we've been touring the county at various sites on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Like I said, we tweaked that, so we're going to just reduce testing at Weekwake Park to Friday. And then we're going to do three days a week at sites around the county. So upcoming locations are in South Orange and in West Quadwell. And you can always, you should always check the COVID testing site website, which is essexcovid.org. That's where the sites are updated as soon as they become available. There is no cost for Essex County residents or Essex County residents. And that's really it. If anyone has any questions?
No. Any of my colleagues?
Well, can I ask him a question about Northfield Avenue, Council President? Or, because I know stuff that's going on there?
Uh, well, he's on now, so I'll break the rule, but quickly, yes.
Okay. Good evening, Anthony. I hope you're doing well.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
And thank you, Bill. Just a quick question to Mr. St. Louis's question about Northfield Avenue and the line striping. I believe right now that Gregory Avenue and all the intersections along Gregory Avenue, there's a repaving and resurfacing going on?
Correct.
That will begin?
Yes.
Okay. Do you think to the point that as they're doing that, they are going to have to restripe when they do Gregory Avenue and those intersections? Do you think the engineers and the companies will look at Northfield Avenue in that area and see if they can do a good touch-up?
I have already asked that. Not that specific question, but I've asked when Northfield Avenue is scheduled to be restripped.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pagliisi. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, thank you, Mr. Pagliisi. And we appreciate all the support from the county with their residents, especially in these tough times. I made an error. I thought I was going to be able to make it to your last food drive, but it was Thursday instead of Friday, so, and I was working. But thank you so much for really helping our residents. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And with that, do we have any other speakers this evening?
One of the speakers re-raised their hands.
Oh, I'm sorry. We cannot have you speak twice, but you could always email us after the meeting. We'd love to answer any questions that you may have. Okay, and with that, I'm going to close the portion for public comment and have responses from my colleagues. Councilman Guarino.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate it. Thank you to all the speakers tonight. You know, the tree ordinance is something that needs to be tweaked a little better. It needs a little bit more of a bite in its teeth. And, you know, many of the speakers are talking about Old Indian Road today and the tree. And I went to speak to Ms. Pierre, who lives on Waddington, whose property backs up. And the tree that they're talking about is on her property. I saw the tree, and I spoke to Mr. Lepore. And right now, there are not any plans to take that tree. They've halted the removal of the tree until they get a better estimate and idea of what could be done to preserve that tree with the drainage and with the roadway. So that's being looked into. And I spoke to the homeowner, and they're very pleased. And they're going to look into that because she wants the tree, but she wants to make sure that it's safe and viable. And if it is, what we can do to work around and not remove that tree. Getting back to the tree ordinance is that it needs to be a little bit more focused and succinct to what we really want it to do. You know, the three-tree exemption, you know, people wait every year. They can cut down three trees, and eventually it's three, and it's six, and it's nine. And it's, you know, we need to really do something. We really need to look at tree ordinance and see what can we do legally and morally? What can we do to say, if you want to take a tree down, these are the steps and the conditions that it has to be met? Is it a sick tree? Can it be saved? And, you know, there needs to be not only the town forester or the town engineer, but maybe a third opinion done. So it's a fully complete review of the tree. And that's what I think we need to do. I think it needs to be sent back. It needs to be tweaked a little bit. You know, every year, we say things. We talk a lot about things. But, you know, when it comes to the trees and the environment, you know, I believe that this is something that we need to collectively sit down and get more people involved, not just the people, but maybe talk to other townships and ask them how they went about their tree ordinance. I hear tonight, people saying, well, what other towns have? Well, let's go to those other towns. Let's see what they do and what their ordinances look like and see if we can adopt ours to be, you know, maybe like theirs, include stuff, take things away. But, you know, just accepting it, just, you know, for three trees and this, and making sure it's on the people's property. You know, people are still going to take down trees. And we know what happens. We've seen it happen. So that's what I'd like to say tonight about the tree ordinances. Mr. St. Louis, I hope I got you some answers with Mr. Pagliisi about Northfield Avenue, because there is the roadway resurfacing on Gregory and the reconstruction of the crosswalks and the intersections. So maybe they can do something at the same time to alleviate, you know, a potential problem on Northfield Avenue. So we hope that answers your question to some extent. And, you know, pedestrian safety is our big thing. We're making a lot of improvements. And I have to say that the county has been a fantastic partner in creating all the pedestrian things that we wanted to do and have done. So asking them and making them a partner is a great way to get the things needed to be done. And that's about that. And so I hope that answers your question. To Mr. Rutherford about meeting with the union presidents on benefits, I'm not sure if that's legally allowed under collective bargaining. And, you know, talking to them, if, you know, the rule of the law is by the state. Do, you know, all the unions have to agree? So if you're asking that you want us to talk to them, to try to convince them that, you know, they're wrong and they should follow somebody else, well, that's another question. But I don't think it's legal under collective bargaining. And the other thing is that we need to look at the state health plan a little better. You know, everybody talks about the state health plan, but people talk about Chapter 330. But do you realize that Chapter 330 does not include non-uniform employees? So if an employee is not a policeman or a fireman, they will not have access to Chapter 330. So those are things we need to look in. But, you know, I'm talking to the unions. If it's collective bargaining, I'm not sure if we're allowed to because the administration is the bargaining, you know, for the township. But we talked to the employees. They talk to us, and we hear them. But, you know, we haven't heard anything different from all the different unions. Some unions want what they currently have. Some unions don't want what they currently have. So that's my response to that question. So, but again, Council President, to my colleagues, going back to the tree ordinance, I think that's something that we need to not run into and, you know, and really look at it. I mean, you know, you get it. You look at it. You say this. Yeah, it looks good. But I really, really believe that we all should get together, talk to the other townships, because I'm tired of hearing people say, well, this town does this. And, well, let's find out what they do. Maybe they do something that is fantastic. Maybe they do something that is so simple that would make everybody and their lives a lot easier, make our tree life and our environment a lot better. And, you know, let's stop fighting over little things. Let's get to the bottom of it. And, you know, and getting back to Mr. Rutherford's thing, there is a separation of powers. There was a separation between the administration and the legislative branch of government. But I don't need to go on anymore. But like I said, back to the tree ordinance, I think it's something we need to, you know, to pull and to, you know, rethink it and to really get a cooperative effort from everybody. And thank you, Council President, for the time allotted.
You're welcome, Councilman. Councilman Kokoviac?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I definitely want to thank everybody, who are the three people who spoke so articulately about the tree ordinance. They were just spot on with just about everything they said. I am in a really strong agreement that we really need to improve our tree protection ordinance. And I'm very encouraged to hear that Councilman Guarino is also willing to take a long, hard look at what we can do to improve this. The suggestions that were made tonight, I think if they were implemented, would be a huge improvement. What's always been an issue, and there was even mention of that tonight, is that the administration does not enforce the ordinance. I'm certainly going to propose an amendment at the next council meeting to specify that we do not offer what is often called retroactive permits by people who cut down the trees, and then the administration does not enforce the law. It issues what they call retroactive permits, which are not in any way included within the language of the ordinance. So I would be very, very willing to work with this. I'm a little shocked that, according to what people are saying, is that they've been working on this for three years and yet don't seem to have gotten a whole lot of what they wanted within here. But it would seem to me that in ordinance, we could, we, the council, if we so desired, we could just put in a, something that specifies that the town does not cut down any trees for road improvements. And if there are trees that residents want to be cut down, we can entertain that. But I think the default should be, we want the trees. We want the oxygen. We want the shade, the coolness, the beauty. And only take down the trees when it's necessary or when it fits into what the property owner wants. I agree. We have to balance the property owner's rights with the community's rights. And I think it was Ms. Malanga who made a very good point that we require permits for a lot of other things for residents. And this could, this could fit in there very nicely. So I'm not sure why we worked on it three years and didn't get a whole lot of change. But I do welcome the improvements, and I welcome Councilman Guarino's willingness to consider further change. Mr. Rutherford, thanks very much for making the suggestion. We are self-insured, and I think what we need to do is, the council needs to pay a lot more attention to the development on an annual basis of what the, what the experts are doing for us. Because typically, what happens is we get all through the process of evaluating options. And the way that the council finds out about it is we get our package of materials on a Thursday before Tuesday council meeting, and we have these huge amounts of data, not only to process, but we haven't been part of the process. We are at the very tail end. And given this huge, significant amounts of money involved here, I really would want the council to be more involved. And so we could be more knowledgeable along the process. And I thank Ms. Williams and Mr. St. Louis and Mr. Pagliisi also for speaking up tonight. And I think that's everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Thank you, Council President. I'll start in reverse. Thank you, Ms. Williams, for reminding us that this month is, well, September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and for always keeping us focused on the importance of advocating and raising awareness. And the recommendation to put a candlelight out is a good one, so thank you for that. Mr. Pagliisi, as always, thank you for your commitment and dedication. I did attend the food distribution at our Life Christian Church. As I walked over there during my lunch hour and was happy to see how quickly things were going. There were a lot of people in need and was so satisfied to see just how the mechanism of everyone, just, it's like clockwork now. So, and certainly, thank you for having considered us as often as the county has and look forward to the continued support from the county, as always. Mr. Rutherford, I will say that I do, you know, and the council has heard this before, and so has the administration. I think the conversations have to be first with an intent to want to do something different. I know that the regulations call for the unions to be all in or none. However, I've said it before, the administration is quite savvy in the negotiation skills, and that is their responsibility, not the council's responsibility. But the council's responsibility is to make sure that we are looking at where our health benefits are taking us, the increasing, the ever-increasing and rising costs. This year, 49% in administrative costs alone is outrageous to me. So I think that for the council, and I'll agree with what Councilman Kokoviac just said, that we're typically given this to review, you know, within days of the time and not part of the process. But more important than that is the fact that the resolution that the council majority approved specifically states that the broker, Fairview, will not seek any quotes from the state health benefits plan. That language is in there. So if we're intentional about really looking at savings, why are we limiting where we're looking? And the reality is that the state health benefit plan does not provide any commission to private health insurance companies. So any private health insurance company, you know, it's a business, right? So I think that it would behoove not just the council, but all of the residents to start paying attention to, you know, health insurance, you know, everywhere. Naturally, we have seen the crisis of the pandemic, you know. It's something that we need to start discussing as a general rule and really looking into what this means to all of us, particularly our taxpayers. So to your point, that is negotiations between the administration and the labor union presidents. But again, we have savvy in negotiation skills in this administration. I'm sure that discussion should be, continue to be had. I believe there is no settlement at this point. I don't know what that is, that status is. But I'm hopeful that they are continuing their dialogue in that regard. Mr. St. Louis, I'm happy that Mr. Pagliisi was here to immediately email his department so that we can get some answers for you with respect to Northfield Avenue. And I, with respect to, and thank you to everyone who spoke on the tree ordinance, I do and will intend to ask my council colleagues to table this ordinance so that we can not piecemeal it, but really put in some piecemeal it, but really put in some language and amendments that are really going to enforce, help us enforce the protection of our canopy. At the end of the day, I think three, and I look at my own living situation, and I can't imagine not having the trees that I have, but it, we need the tree canopy. And if we're not saying no more cutting of healthy trees, especially for road work, we're not really intentional about or committed to preserving our trees. As far as the tree emails that we've all received about the tree on Old Indian Road, I know Councilman Guarino said that, that work that he spoke to, I'm sorry, Councilman, I can't remember if you said you spoke to the forester or the engineer, but that that work was on hold. I did reach out to the forester as well as to our town engineer. I did receive a response from the forester. His, he did not say that, so perhaps a follow-up conversation should be had. He did tell me that the tree itself was hollow. I did have some follow-up questions to that, which I am still waiting for a response for, but I agree that, you know, we cannot pass an ordinance just to improve. I think that we need to really look at other areas of improvement to enforce, to preserve our trees. So I would be supportive of Councilman Guarino's and Councilman Kokoviac's position as well with respect to the tree ordinance. And I think that is it for me. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome, Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, Council President. So I'm going to start with that. I'm absolutely not ready to table this ordinance. We have worked on it, as you've heard, for a long time. There has been a hiatus on it between the storms cleanup and power outages and COVID and not meeting for many months. But I was initiating this ordinance because I think it is vital that residents understand that we have to have certified tree care, licensed tree care experts do the work in town so that they do understand what needs to get done and that there are permits that are required. I appreciate the comments of Gary Van Wick and Sally and Joyce. They have sat in on many of the environmental commission meetings to go over this. It's a legal question about the three trees, if that is arbitrary. Gary made a point about Kemp. I would definitely work on a campaign to publicize these new amendments. This has been a long time that I have been asking for this ordinance to come forward, so I'm glad to see it finally here. It is most important that we have a licensed tree care expert. That has been something that the DEP has had to state in act since 2017. Some of the comments that were made about what other municipalities are doing, we have been copying what other municipalities are doing. That's how we got this far. One of the comments that I would ask legal to look at is about the non-viable tree. Gary had made this about a non-viable tree. It sounds as though that should not be under exemptions. The permit process was for all trees to have to have a permit that is under 25-27.4A permit. Any person desiring to cut down or remove a tree, so file an application for the tree removal permit issued pursuant to this chapter, and shall not commence to cutting down or removing any tree without first having been issued this permit. So that was the comment that was just made by Joyce, I believe. We have added the notifying the neighbors if the property is close to a property line, which I think is respectful and necessary. Again, we can bring it back to legal and talk about enforcement, but I do request my colleagues move forward on this because I think it is vital that we have registered licensed tree care experts doing the work on trees. I wanted to say thank you to Anthony and that, thank you to Anthony Puglisi. I think it was good timing on the part of Mr. St. Louis to come on to talk about Gregory Avenue and Northfield, and Anthony to respond so promptly. So thank you for that. Tammy, you know, this, designating these different months to me, September as Suicide Awareness Month, the work of the Suicide Coalition has been that every month, every day, we want to prevent suicide and put out resources and information to help people every day. And if it means a push in September to do that, then so be it. I appreciate the work of the Suicide Prevention Coalition working on that continuously. There was a, going back to the trees, and I have so many notes here. I know our engineer is on the call here. The tree on Old Indian engineer has made a recommendation that the homeowner get an independent evaluation of the tree, if it, to deem if it is unhealthy or healthy, and then the work on Old Indian can either be reconfigured or creative use of paving that road if the tree should be saved. That is something the Environmental Commission has talked about also, looking at how to save trees along the street. And Mr. Rutherford, the mayor and the administration works on negotiations. They bring those, that information back to the council. We have been, again, months talking about our, since our budget hearing, talking about how retiree benefits are going to outpace our current employee benefits, and we have to, we have been looking at ways to curtail that expense. We were provided, the CFO provided the council with an analysis of the state health benefit plan, and currently, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me, I wasn't anticipating the call. I believe it was a $2 million difference from what we currently have and what it would be if we went with the Gordon State Health Benefit Plan. Our CFO is on the call, he can comment on that. I'm going to ask my colleagues not to postpone this tree ordinance. I think it's important that we move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Just to go back to food distribution, again, thank you, Anthony, but also earlier, I wanted to point out a thank you to our Hispanic Foundation with Deputy Mayor Rodolfo Rodriguez. They had distribute food this past weekend with St. Barnabas in the neighborhood, so we appreciate all their efforts as well. And Cynthia Cummings and her team of volunteers with, you know, thank goodness, people are, more and more people are going back to work, and many of her volunteers are, you know, getting ready to go back to school or off to college. The food pantry now is only going to be open. She had made a tough decision just on Tuesdays instead of Tuesdays and Friday, and that was heartbreaking for them to make that decision, but they had a streamline and also hopefully prepare for, for the winter. So she'll, she's reaching out to various volunteers. I know Sert's looking to help her out, and we appreciate all those if you want to contact her for, to help. Tammy, thank you so much for all you do. I know this suicide prevention is near and dear to your heart with your own family experience, and thank you. These are tough times for so many. I'm glad that school is coming back, even if it's online now, and hopefully our students can transition through, but I hope our parents remember, there's so, there's so many great resources in the West Orange School District, so please reach out. If you don't know where to go, start with your building principal, but our special services department is there, they're there to help you, so always please reach out. And our senior services department is doing a tremendous job, still with the outreach with our, with our senior citizens. I'm glad the summer, we had a few folks go out and about, and now they'll be, you know, getting ready for the winter. And with that, I wanted to mention also, they're working on a Zoom program for our seniors, which is great, to teach them how to Zoom. So we hope to get a lot of them online and to help with, with mental wellness. It's so important. To change gears, but to trees, I'm going to support Councilwoman McCartney's plea for us to move forward with this tonight. She invited me on a call, I'm working with her, and we could get more into this later when we get to the ordinance, because I want to get moving, because we have a presentation for the capital budget. But basically, you know, there's, you know, this isn't perfect. There's some good recommendations here, and especially about the company's registering, but I do believe the biggest issue, it's not so much with the ordinance as it is in enforcement and our, our process and a PR campaign. New residents now, when they come in, we had asked the mayor's department to post on there and give them the tree ordinance, so when you move into town, you know that there is an ordinance, but that's just not enough. We still have so many that don't realize that there is an ordinance, believe it or not. I mean, a lot of folks, and thank you for speaking tonight, you're a great environmentalist, you're a great advocates, but there's so many people that, that are not in tune like you are. So we do have to start a PR campaign, we do have to work with enforcements and process, and Mr. Laporte could speak to that later. I'll have him speak when we get close, when we talk about the ordinance later on. But that's, you know, that's a direction we're going to have to go. So my recommendation later will to be to move this, start work on this tonight, and you could always amend it. You could, you could always amend it moving forward. That's the beauty of an ordinance. It doesn't have to be perfect, but you can always add on to it as you move forward with it. But at least it strengthens more than what we have today, and it's also balanced with property owners. You know, somebody wants to put on an addition or, you know, put a pool in, we need to be mindful of those things also. And that's also increases the tax base of, you know, for their property as well. So we'll talk about that later on. I look forward to, to the discussion. Let's see here, Mr. St. Louis, great timing with Mr. Puglisi, and he's very responsive, so, so thank you for coming to us this evening. And who else have I missed? Mr. Rutherford. So just real quick, we, you know, we've been going back and forth with this for a while, but just, you know, Mr. Gross, every year, he numerates these contracts for us. We have opportunity to go in and sit down with him to discuss the enumeration. The mayor, you know, it's administration. Where I came from in school board plan years ago, I was able to partake, a different form of government, so I was able to sit on negotiations committee for the school board and negotiate with the teachers' union. Unfortunately, with the way the government's set now, is it's, it's the mayor's responsibility and the administration, Mr. Sayers and Mr. Gross, and they sit down. Not to say we don't have conversations with our, our union heads, you know, we're, you know, a lot of them I've known for, you know, since, for many years now. So they have to come to an agreement. We encourage both sides to come to an agreement sooner than later is regards to their current benefits with our broker. Our broker's fees are, yes, they are heavy on the administrative side, but if we were to move to a different broker, which is something that the council could always do, we're going to have to hire additional staff to replace the work that's done with this broker. So this broker and Mr. Gross could, you know, talk about that more, but they do a lot of administrative detail for us. And, you know, that, that's something we can move away from, but we have to be prepared of how we're going to move forward with operations. So we could always do something, we could always reconsider, but, you know, we have to weigh all the options also. State health benefit plan, it's not, it's not the same or better of what the current contract states, and, and right now, that language would have to be changed, and that's something that there, you know, would have to be negotiated. So we just couldn't move them into the state plan because it's not the same or better. If we did find a plan that was the same or better, I'd be all for that move. So if Mr. Gross, when he runs his numbers and looks at plans working with the broker, if he finds another option for us, I would definitely be willing to look at that, as long as the union can't challenge us because it's not same or better. So with that, something that we've just been discussing for a long time now, we all have various opinions, which is great, that's why we're all on here, we all have our opinions, and we'll move forward. So with that, I thank everyone for coming on the air this evening, and I look forward to moving, having discussion later on about the tree ordinance. So, Madam Clerk?
Okay, we're going to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, August 11th, 2020.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Okay, so we have three resolutions this evening.
I'm so sorry, Council President, to interrupt. I was on mute, and I thought I, I did have a question on the bill.
Oh, oh, absolutely, go ahead.
I was talking, you didn't realize I was on mute. It was just one that I hadn't noticed before, but it is, I made note of it, give me one second.
Okay. Mr. Gross, this will be for you.
Yes, this is for you, Mr. Gross. So it is dated 8/18/20, and it's a credit card transfer of $49,411.28. It's got a designation of animal. I mean, I can assume what that is, but can you just tell me what that is, please?
Credit card. We receive all of our credit card purchases online into a single account, and then we periodically distribute them to the proper accounts, so that's a transfer. That's an, that's an internal transfer, it's not an external transaction.
So what's the designation, oh, for animal? I just assumed it was like for the animals, shelter, but that's not it, that's not it? Or is that?
For animal control.
Yes.
Yes. In other words, when we, we sell licenses.
Okay.
Online, or, you know, whatever we, we do, when it goes, when people come in and they pay by credit card for internal control purposes, it all goes to the general fund, and then we, later in the year, transfer it to, back to the animal control account. So again, an internal transfer to get monies into the right accounts.
Okay. Appreciate it, thank you. That was it.
Your vote.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, so we have three resolutions this evening, one being to adopt the 2020 municipal budget. Do any of my colleagues want any, anything pulled? Councilman Guarino?
None on the resolutions, Council President, no thank you.
Okay, Councilman Kokoviac?
Council President, no. I just would like to note that we had our required public hearing on the budget.
Yeah, I was going to get to that after.
And so I guess it's ready for the vote, but I, there's no reason for me to pull any of this tonight.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman, Matu Brown?
Just had a question for Mr. Gross. Well, no, it's just a question.
That's okay, you can ask a question.
Okay. It is for the Resolution 170-20.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gross, about the budget.
Yes, it was about, it's about the budget. Two questions, actually, with respect to the capital improvements. Can you just briefly, for the public, just give an overview about what those capital improvement costs are going to cover for the 1 million, I'm sorry, is that 1 million? I can't even see with my glasses.
So, so, so what, so just real quick, Councilwoman, we're going to have a presentation, I should have mentioned that, my apologies, on when we get, when we get to the second and final reading, so we will have a presentation on that.
Okay.
So if you need for us to move this, and you want to see the presentation first, we can, we could hold up the vote. If you, just whatever makes you more comfortable.
I I I would like to see the presentation first.
If I, if I, just to be, just to be clear, the budget does not allocate on any particular.
Yes, I know.
Any, any particular program.
Yes.
Provide down payment, down payment money that that is reserved until you use it in a capital ordinance. So there's no direct connection or tie between the capital ordinance and the and the the general fund budget, other than you're allocating funds for that purpose.
Yes, and it was last time we had this discussion, there was like a general overview of what those monies were, would be allocated to, obviously only spent when council approved them.
Right, we, we, we did send that out. Um, we did, we sent out a, 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 a list of that. And of course, we have it in the presentation tonight as well.
Okay, so I'll just watch in the presentation then. That that was it.
Okay, so are you comfortable with moving this now, or you want?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with moving it now.
Okay, great. And Councilwoman McCartney, do you want any items pulled? Or do you have a question?
No questions.
Okay, I see Councilman Kukoviac has a question.
Actually, no, actually, I, I, I have, after 10 years of voting on budget adoptions, I figured out the process. I would like to pull the budget adoption resolution.
Okay.
So that I can vote against it.
Okay, fine. Okay, so we're going to pull item A. And I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Moved.
I can.
Okay.
Favor?
I.
And opposed, the consent agenda is implemented.
Okay, and if you want to make a, Councilman Kukoviac, any other further comment, or just you're good to vote?
Yeah, just very quickly, the budget increased this year a couple of percent. The proposed tax levy goes up about 1.76%, I think. Uh, and I, I do want to note, and in fact, my fellow council members for voting against some of the proposed increases, um, and that allowed us to get below the 2%. The 2% that was an increase in the tax levy that was originally proposed. As usual, I just had wished that we had been able to find three more votes to reduce spending further, particularly given what's going on with the the economy because of COVID. But I just wanted to, to pull it just so I could vote against it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and just so the public knows, we did have a full public hearing last month. It is online if you missed it. Also, the budget booklet itself is online. It's 169 pages. We had two workshops. They also, or everything's on on the township website. So please feel free, we were very transparent with the process. Um, we tried to have all the information out there so you could view it. And you still have, anyone would like to ask us a question, always feel free to reach out. Uh, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 170 dash 20?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Okay. I'll second it.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. Okay, so as I stated earlier, Mr. Laporte has a presentation for us tonight on for 26 10 dash 20. However, Madam Moderator, can you see if anyone in the audience is here for the other ordinances? If you could just pull them and raise their hand if they want to speak on any other ordinances, I'll I'll take them first. We have people waiting in the audience for them.
Um, sure, so you just want people to raise their hand if they have a?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Councilman, I'll get to you in a minute.
Great, thank you.
If you can propose the question, so that way it's like official.
Sure, so, so folks, who's, any of our attendees on the call? Um, because we are going to have a presentation on item 2610 for the capital improvement. Uh, if anyone is here for any of the other ordinance on second and final readings, you get opportunity to speak for the rent control ordinance, for the handicap parking ordinance, item C, and item D, well, that's just an internal ordinance, but item D and item A, 2614. So if anyone?
Council President?
Yes, Count.
I, I think I understand what you're doing, but I just want to make sure you realize that you're going to have to go through this ordinance by ordinance with respect to public comment.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I just, I just want to see if anyone is waiting around before we have the presentation. I'm just trying to be courteous to the audience. Just raise your hand if you, if you were going to speak on any items from B to to E. Anybody?
No, no one's raising their hand.
Okay, then no need to bat out of order then. Okay, so Mr. Laporte?
Actually, I I'm going to be doing the presentation.
Okay, okay, Mr. Gross. So we will move to your presentation on item.
We need to.
Ordinance 2610 dash 20, bond ordinance providing various capital improvements in and by the township of West Orange in the county of Essex, New Jersey. Um, Madam Clerk, do you need to read that in, or? Who needs to vote to introduce, or just do the presentation first? How would you like to proceed?
I think you would probably want the presentation first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and Councilman Kukoviac, you did have a question, my apologies.
I just actually had two questions. Again, I'm sorry, I'm really disorganized tonight. Just two questions about the budget. Number one, we had actually put off the adoption vote for a month so that we could get a clear idea of borrowing, potential borrowings. And it was also related to my second question, which is, where is the shortfall in property taxes at this point? I thought Mr. Gross could just quickly address those.
And he is. This is all in his presentation to us. Okay, we're already ahead of you there. Go ahead, Mr. Gross.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll deal with that question first. I, I sent out to council last Tuesday an update of of where we were at that point in time, and that the legislature and the, and the governor had signed the bill that would allow us the ability to finance any shortfalls should we, should we have them towards the end of the year. Uh, and on that basis, that I recommended adoption of the budget. If you remember at the last meeting, I held it up just because the legislature and the governor had not yet signed off on those bills. So we were at that point, $4.7 million still outstanding. As of today, a week later, it's a 4.4 million, so we picked up about 300,000. If we pick up 300,000 a week, that's what, that will be, get us where we need to go as long as that trend continues on. Uh, one thing that's interesting and not good about the the breakdown of our taxes is that that 300,000 came almost exclusively from property, from residential property owners. Uh, that's a good thing for the presidential property owners. However, the commercial properties, which a week ago were at one point, round rough numbers, 1.4 million dollars, are still at that same exact number. So as you may not be surprised, in the situation that we're in, the commercial properties are struggling. And that will mean to see, you see how that impacts us over the next quarter. So that's, that's the status of that. Um, Lauren, if you could help me, where, give me a little guidance here as to how near the screen.
Right, so if you just hover your mouse on the bottom there.
Yep.
You'll see a share screen. And once you do that, you can choose either desktop or the tab that you have open with your presentation. And then you click share on the bottom right. There you go.
I, am I shared?
You are shared, and then you're just going to hit slideshow and then from beginning. Oh, yeah, there you go. There you go.
Okay, uh, this is, well, hopefully a brief presentation on the 2020 capital bond ordinance and a recap of the 2019 capital program and what we've, what we've been able to accomplish with with that. Well, this is the 2020 capital budget ordinance. It's actually prob, more properly defined as the 2021 capital budget, being that we're in September, funds will not be eligible to be dispersed until sometime in October, and our ability to get work done for the end of the year is going to be very limited. So this particular ordinance is larger than normally we would propose. It's 13,463,500. But that again is the nature, because of the nature of this being a 20, and for the most part, a 21 capital budget ordinance. That's not to say that we won't have additional capital needs that we'll come back to you next year for, but I think they will be limited, frankly. Um, this particular ordinance, as I, as I mentioned, is for 13,463,500, of which authorizes debt in the amount of 12,823,45. Uh, show with a down payment of 641,155. Now, I'm not going to read everything, but I want to try to touch on the highlights of these, of this ordinance. The, if you take a look at the ordinance, its combined useful life is about 13 years, which means that once we finance it, permanent financing on it, we have 13 years to pay it off. That's good and 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 that presents challenges. It's good because we we don't have extended debt, and none of our debt is. Most of our debt is in that range. But it also means usually some type of a higher payment. Uh, that's a good thing. We've been able to manage that. I can, I anticipate we will continue to manage that well. And again, as I, as I said before, this is going to be 2021. And and one of the questions that comes up every now and then is like, when do we go get this, and when do we take this debt down? When do we start paying on it? And generally, there's like a two-year lag. Uh, so most likely, this will be financed in '21, payable in '22 at the earliest. It could actually be, in total, be until '22 where we take it down and pay or start paying back in '23. So this, we will, we'll see the impact of this on our budget until a couple of years. Um, if you look at the total budget of 13,463, it breaks down into capital equipment of about 500,000, indoor facility improvements of about 1.2, IT capital about 1.7, outdoor facility improvements, 1.7, capital vehicle acquisition of about 8,000, again, and and the lion's share is street sidewalk and sewer improvements of six points, I'm sorry, 7.7 million. Um, hold on just a second, I wanted to talk a little bit about. Okay, I'm sorry. A little bit about the different categories. Again, I'm not going to read off everything, but I just want to give you a sense of what is in the the capital budget ordinance. This is the the verbiage out of the ordinance itself, but out of this, close to $500,000, uh, we're looking at, we're proposing, uh, equipment, which includes additional funds for OS pack sound and and video equipment. If our pond aerators, a power cots for the fire department, a truck and trailer mounted camera system for the police, or from, for DPW to monitor our sewers, and additional of personal protective equipment for the fire department. The indoor facility improvements of 1.1 million, 160, um, is primarily, um, facade and and building internal improvements at the, at the fire department, uh, fire safety improvements in other buildings. Information technology capital, lion's share, that's going for the police department for a, the first phase of a new radio system. And for this year, infrastructure and following years would be radio equipment itself, um, new, um, body and mobile video cameras for the police department. Some stations, I'm sorry, station apparatus monitors for the fire department and and some emergency operations center upgrades for IT. Outdoor facility improvements, uh, lots of improvements at, at Degnan. Uh, we're talking about athletic, multi-use field covering, improvements to the kitty park, and at OS pack, new stage four in, and at, at OS pack. Vehicle acquisitions includes new ambulance for the fire department, marked patrol vehicles, unmarked patrol vehicles, a jitney bus, and several cars and vehicles for the fire department, and one for the health department.
Excuse me, Mr. Gross, the, um, the vehicles that we're waiting for from last year that were on back order from COVID, did they come in yet?
Not as of today.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll get to that later.
Okay, thanks.
Um, and then, again, lion's share of this ordinance, 7.7 million dollars, various road programs, you'll see here. Basically, a list of a road program, roads that we're looking to do over the next year. And I'm not going to read all those streets, and this will be up online if anyone wants to take a look to see what those streets are. One of the things that was, that the Council President asked was for us to go through and review the capital projects that have been completed over the past year or so. And this is a, a representation of that. As you all remember, the last time you were in council chambers, we did do council chamber sound and video improvements of about $30,000, which I think were very welcomed favorably. And when we get back, we'll certainly be utilizing them regularly. Um, additionally, for the fire department, breathing air compressor system and also SCBA's, which is the the oxygen tanks of the firefighters wear when they go in. This is a good example where we, um, parlay our capital with grants. And this particular situation for these purchases, we spent about $68,000 of capital money and also, and matched that with $293,000 of a grant in order to get this equipment. Ambulance, we did an ambulance replacement of 141,000. Fire department vehicles, just a little less than 90,000. Over the last year and a half and through the end of this year, we'll have spent 1.045 million on replacing fire, the, all the roofs on all five firehouses. And there's, as well as some other facilities, but this, this particular one focused on the five firehouses. And by the end of this year, that that will be completed. Generator systems, again, we're able to parlay our capital money in approximately 117,000, 118,000 dollars with, with a quarter of a million dollars from a grant to, to put mercy generators at, at Town Hall, firehouse number one and firehouse number two, as well as an outdoor lighting and generator system.
Okay.
OS pack sound system, which we spent so far about $38,000. And everything that I've heard from that system and from people that have heard it is very, very positive. is very, very positive, very happy with, with, with the improvements that have been made. Spent about a half a million dollars in equipment and vehicles at the DPW. Again, that's anywhere from cars and trucks to, to dump trucks and run in loaders. Police department, again, about four hundred and fifty, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars on MDTs and police cars, some of which are still to come in. Dunkle pool improvements, tremendous, again, two hundred ninety thousand in our capital, a hundred and fifty-two thousand in CDBG and sixty-two thousand from open space. And what a great response we've gotten to those improvements. O'Connor Park tennis courts, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Our special needs playground, about three hundred thousand dollars for the playground and surrounding area. Pleasantale parking lot, again, about three hundred thousand dollars. You see this here, this is the, the wall that was replaced and of course, the resurfacing of the parking lot, which was sorely needed. Three hundred thousand plus on Vincent Pond improvements. LED visibility signage, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars we spent last year. This is representative of that, not all the signs, we didn't take a hundred and fifty-six as more than three. And, and we've done other traffic calming. So there's a picture here of that in, in strategic spots where the, the community was looking. And over the last year or so, we've, this goes back not just in nineteen, but two thousand eighteen road program, we completed or have started nine, nine point seven million dollars worth of projects that has been funded through capital. And there's that list. And again, I'm not going to read those all off, but when you go online, you can look up and sit just to see. And of course, if you live there, you know, it has been completed.
You're really improving on your tech skills, Mr. Gross.
And of course, last year we spent almost twelve million dollars in the acquisition of Rock Spring Golf Course.
Okay.
And so I appreciate the time. That's, I think that was a, a pretty good overview. It's not a hundred percent of everything that we've, we've done. But I think it, it tells the story of how important and, and how integral our capital projects are to the quality of life here in West Orange.
I, I, I appreciate you and Mr. Lepore taking the time to put that together for us. It is important for our taxpayers to see their dollars at work. And that definitely gives a good visual. I'll ask my colleagues now, do they have any questions for you, Councilman Greenow?
Thank you, Council President. And yes, and also let our, our employees know how much we care about them with the improved services and equipment to protect them doing their job. So that, it was a great presentation. I have a question, I'm a concerned about the new equipment vehicular with the budget. In your budget, you talk about four-wheel drive vehicles, but is there any component to buy a new pumper? Because I believe the age of our pumpers in the township fire department are really nearing their usefulness. And, you know, I, I know you bought one from Ridgewood a couple of years ago for a good price. But, you know, we have a couple others in town that are really seeing, have seen better days. So are there any anticipations of buying any new pumper equipment for our fire department?
Well, I think you probably, you think we probably could buy every year. Buying a, a new large piece of equipment for the fire department. We try to find balance in that. So I, this year we had an extraordinary, we're having an, this year and next year, actually, an extraordinary expense with the new, the, the new radio system for the police department. So we think that, you know, we're, we're okay with waiting another year or so. But we're, over the next couple of years, we're going to need to, to, to put together a plan and actually look, look at that in terms of additional fire department.
What, when you do that?
One of the things, it's important, I think, and what I'm trying, what we're trying to get some rhythm to this so that we're not moving off, as we move into the future, we don't find ourselves in a situation where we need to get two or three in the same year or the same set of years. We, we, we want to try to create, create a replacement pattern that's more, more usable, more, more viable for us.
All right. Well, that was my next question, Mr. Gross. Thank you. That, you know, we need to start putting in a replacement calendar so that, you know, you don't have to buy three in one year, but that you always keep our serviced equipment, you know, in, in good shape, but also, you know, within the parameters of, you know, safe operating for our firefighters.
Unfortunately, we have a, we have a pattern in the past where we would buy two in one year. And it's, it's, and, you know, that was, that was when they, that was when they cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
I, I have one question, Mr. Gross, too, about other equipment. I didn't see anywhere, and if I missed it, bad me, but I don't see anywhere we were going to purchase any charging stations for the township or, you know, for residents to use.
We have not identified specific locations for that. We certainly entertain that. Obviously, when, when we move DPW, that location, those locations will be viable for that. I think, I, this is my own personal opinion, when we acquire the site up by the, the mall and by the, the new library, that would be a good location for charging sites as well.
Can I interject there? Sure. Sure, on that, up at Essex Green, the original application at Essex Green was for four charging stations. The applicant has increased that to fifteen. So definitely moving in the right direction. And for municipality, there is a grant that we were looking at for electric charging stations. There is discussion with the Board of Ed and municipal properties. So that's another grant in the works.
Absolutely. And we're going to look to buy some, like, you know, to purchase cars in the future, moving forward, more cost-effective electric vehicle wherever possible. And, and once we get a critical mass, it'll make sense for us to invest in larger banks of spaces. If we first get them, it's going to take, we're going to have to get creative about how we're going to charge them.
Good. That's my next question. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman, Councilman Greenow, you still have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. No problem. And thank you for your interjection, Councilwoman McCartney. That was a good point. Mr. Gross, the last question is, do we have any idea of, of any potential purchases of electrical vehicles for township?
Yes, where the, the mayor has made it clear to us that we are to consider electrical vehicles whenever possible, and, and we will, we will continue to do so, we will do that. It, it, again, it's, it's, it's related to the use of the vehicles, but that, that is our plan. And again, we'll, what, once we get a critical mass of vehicles, then we'll consider a larger look at, at, at electrical, an electrical bank and, for instance, in the town hall parking lot.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gross. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Mr. Gross, I just wanted to get a little bit more fill-in on what you were saying at the beginning of your presentation, that if we authorize this, that we may not have to start paying back till as late as two thousand and twenty-three. Could you explain a little bit more how the, your plans for actually issuing the debt and then, of course, having to pay it off, please?
Sure. It is, you know, we, we, we try to issue debt based on when we think we're going to actually need it and when we're going to spend it. So, you know, we, if it gets approved tonight, we could borrow the money, you know, in, in two weeks. But it doesn't make sense to borrow the money and just to have it sitting in a bank account. So we push that off as long as possible. So this year, for instance, this is two thousand twenty, we're finding, you know, we, we, we went out with two thousand eighteen money this year. So it's usually, and then that doesn't get paid, be paid down to the year following. So we, sometimes we can get as lo- as far out as three years. This time we won't be able to because of the size of it, probably get out, maybe get it out two years. And then, Chris, we're, we're working with money that we already have.
Mr. Gross, can you also explain the process to the, to the public, too? So, so when these projects come up and they're ready to be approved upon, I, I mean, again, it's all done separately. It all gets broken down individually with the timing. If you could just elaborate for the, for the community.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the process is, is, when we, when you, when you adopt a bond ordinance, the first thing that, that we do or that I do is when necessary, I will sell a bond anticipation note. And that's something that I'm authorized to do on a day-to-day basis in order to make sure that we have the, the maintained cash flows for the things that we're purchasing or, or improvements that we're making. And then some point in the future, usually three or four years later, will contemplate going long and actually selling a bond. So by the, by the time bonds are sold on our project, it's probably five years down the line, four to five years before we go long. And that may be a little shorter now because we're in a, a very low and continue to be in a very low interest rate environment. According to the Fed this week, it looks like they're planning on maintaining this low interest rate environment for as much as five years. That's good news for taxpayers. So we may go, we may accelerate a little bit of that in, in, in a few years in anticipation of, of, you know, the rising rates after that so that we can continue to enjoy the benefit of low rates.
Thank you. Continue, Councilman Kukoviac. I just wanted him to elaborate on that.
Nope, that's fine. And just to add to Mr. Gross's tutorial, when he bor- when he borrows a, a bond anticipation note, we borrow the money for a year or less, very short-term money at very low interest rates. I don't know what the, is it down to thirty basis points now, Mr. Gross?
I, I have, I had one at point three-three, so yeah.
Nice.
That's extremely low interest rates.
Yes. Well, all rates now are low, are, are peaking, are dipping under two percent. You know.
So as long as they stay low, Mr. Gross is gold.
Good point. Good point.
I'm keeping it low, don't you know?
So he's going to be calling the Fed up. Any other questions, Councilman?
Oh, no, that's fine. But all this demand, it's be pushing up, Mr. Gross.
Oh, no. That's, 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 that's the, that's the whole question is when, when will it, when will it push up? But it looks like the Fed is, is decided that it's going to keep it low, whatever they have to do, so.
Great. Gray nose.
We'll see if that happens.
All right. You're good, Councilman?
Yes, thank you.
Beautiful. Councilwoman Madhu Brown?
Mr. Gross, to your point, we'll see if that happens. I like hold my breath every time we talk about, you know, where we're going to be tomorrow. And I, I know I'm not alone in this space. We're all in this space together. But I think with, when it comes to looking at our annual debt statement and looking at the, the very much needed capital improvement projects, it, it's, it's such a hard space to be in, you know, having looked at so many different departments this year in advance of being here and understanding, for instance, the need for the infrastructure and the expense of the infrastructure for our first responders. You know, it, it's, it's daunting to think about, but the, the, the other alternative is not an option. Because if our first responders don't have the technology that they need in their infrastructure to be able to communicate, that impacts us all negatively and, and, you know, endangers them and, and further, you know, endangers their response time to, to us, so.
And we've put, we've put that, you're, you're, I think you're referring primarily to, the biggest one in this is the, the communication system.
Yeah.
And we have put that off, we've danced with that for a number of years. And, and we believe now that now is the time to get it done. We, we, I, I did go out and commission a study. It was originally estimated this was going to cost overall about three and a half million. I did a study and we, we, we worked on it internally as well. And we think that at the very most now, we're talking two and a half and we might be able to get it under two. By, we're, we're investing in technology that ultimately will allow many of the people who right now are using radios that cost seven, eight, nine thousand dollars a piece to use telephones, which is a big savings for us. And so, and so, and, and obviously, you know, a, a patrol officer is not going to be out there with a telephone. But there's a lot, there's a lot of people that traditionally have radios that frankly are carrying radios and telephones and it makes more sense than telephones. And they can use, they can speak on the radio. So we're looking at that type of, of, of system that has that kind of flexibility that will allow us to save taxpayer dollars and provide the, the, the best communication systems for our first responders. So we're, we're real happy with the way this is turning out. We think we've walked that tightrope and, and hopefully we've hit the right tune, so.
I, I, yes, I'm very relieved to, to see that as part of the plan. The other, I also noticed that there were some facade for the municipal building. Does that include the police department as well? Is there any plans to updating? And I'm saying that from having walked in there, it's, it's dreary and I'm being very kind.
You are.
Part of the problem is we have, we have the balance of dreary and against.
Breaking roofs.
Critical need. And so, for instance, we're going to put a new roof on town hall this year. Which is part of that and it needs that. You know, we, we, we're, we're, we're looking at getting our infrastructure and protecting it. And I think that, you know, we probably are going to consider what we're going to do with the police department in, in the near future years, but we didn't do anything with it this year.
Okay. And, and just for the public's benefit as well, I know that, you know, and I, and I think we've all been watching and listening when we hear stories about infrastructure for transit or railways. It, it, we have to keep maintaining them. Otherwise, the continued deterioration and kicking that can down the road causes bigger problems. And I know I have a colleague in, in West Caldwell that they were facing a tremendous amount of repairs and they just neglected it until it could not be neglected anymore and then there was no choice.
We, we were near that position some, maybe ten years ago and, 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 you know, we, we, when we came out and started doing capital improvements, one of the things that I insisted on, we did a lot of studies, you know, and really had, had evaluations done so that we weren't going to piecemeal it. Because it's important, you know, it's one thing to, it's one thing to take care of the things you can see. It's things you can't see that, that are going to tear the buildings down. So, yeah, I think you're, you're a hundred percent right and it's the most important, one, one of the more important things that we, we do here.
And so with this, and this is my last question. Our debt statement will then be with this ordinance, should, should the bond be granted tonight? Where are we, about ninety-three?
No, no, it's higher than that. It's, you want about the percentage?
No.
Total, oh, two, ninety-three million, yes.
Ninety-three million. And the percentage of, of, of what's allowable by statute, where are we?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't bring the, and, and maybe Councilman Kukoviac has it, has the, the debt.
Mine.
Three and a half percent is, is the max, obviously, but you, you want to know what?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, three and a half is the max. I think it's about one point four, one point three, if I remember correctly. But I, I'll, I'll find out the exact number. But it's certainly, in my opinion, it's well below where, where we could go. And, and, but I think it's needed and we're right where we need to be in terms of, of. where we need to be in terms of, of maintaining our, our assets.
And also, also the very low, I'm sorry, Councilman?
Could I just, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to throw in the number now. The ratio is 1.637, which is just about double what it, what the ratio was a decade ago.
It was 1.4 before this. Yes.
So we'll be at 1.637?
And the state, and the state doesn't allow you to go above 3.5?
And we don't even want to get there. But I, I think that also a consideration for, for all of us is just that, that low rate, interest rate environment that we are in. And how it does, you know, as much as no one likes to borrow, but how it does benefit us for the things that we absolutely need to repair.
Yeah. And I think that one thing to keep in mind, keep in mind that this is, you know, basically going to be a two-year project, two-year plan. You know, next year, we're going to be, whatever, whatever we add is going to be substantially less. That with, with our pay downs next year, that 1.6 is going to probably drop to about one and a half.
Okay. All right. That's it for me, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. I see my notes from our August budget hearing that converting the debt, lower rates, keeping the debt within the 2%. So we are thankfully, John, still doing that.
Yes.
Council President, I wanted to say thank you for your request for the 2019 completed projects. I really appreciate this compilation. John, I wanted to ask, what, what was the bond ordinance when we approved this for 2019? And sans the Rock Spring Goth Club, how, how did we fare in what was the bond ordinance and what has been completed?
Yes, the, the bond ordinance was about, was eight and a half million. And so we, we've probably 80, 85% of that is, is spent. And then, you know, we, we, obviously, the numbers that I gave you has numbers from the previous year because there's always some leftover that, you know, bond ordinances by, by their nature get spent out over a two to three-year period. So.
It's just nice to see that every department and has been addressed, issues in every department. I think what would be interesting on this budget, or, I mean, I'm sorry, bond ordinance, would be a second column. We have a period of usefulness, but on all of the replacement items that we've been talking about for our first responders, police and fire, what they're using now and what that period of usefulness was.
I, I could, I could tell you that probably on average, at least double, and in many cases, triple and quadruple.
Exactly. Which is why.
Have you guys having trouble hearing him, or is that just me?
Well.
That may be just you.
He answered my question. So, I mean, I appreciate that because I know that to see these replacements on here is necessary.
Particularly when we come to vehicles. Vehicles are like four times its use. You know, we, we've got 20-year-old vehicles out there. So, and long, to be honest with you.
So to use one of your words, John, about housekeeping, you're going to have to explain to me, under B, indoor facility capital improvements?
Yes.
The last sentence there, general facility improvements and fireflies?
Yeah, I saw that too. That is definitely a typo. It's, it's, it was supposed to be fire department. I, I, I looked and see that.
Might have been an automatic.
My original, my, my original narrative didn't have that in it. I don't know where that, where that, but, you know, fireflies can be very expensive these days.
I guess, I guess.
It's not, it's not a substantive change, so it's not a problem.
Thank you for the presentation. I like when it, when it makes sense. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And again, thank you. Great presentation. We see a common theme, safety, 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 our facilities, our infrastructure. So we appreciate that. Maybe just real quick with Rock Spring, what we're looking to do. I know the mayor is coming on in the near future with hopefully some kind of plan that he's looking to do in regards to moving forward with Rock Spring. But once we, that won't be till next year if we go for the open space fund grant for, once a plan is formulated, Mr. Gross, is that next year's budget?
Yeah. Well, it's not a budget issue. It, it is, the, the high-level plan is to come to some conclusion as to what we're doing with property. And then once we do that, and then be prepared, funds will become available next spring for, for open space. And it's a letter application for us. So it's just a matter of, once we identify the site, putting it in, and, and we, we will get funding. Depends on how much is available from the state, you know, and, and they may put, I've not heard anything like this, but it wouldn't surprise me, given where we are, whether they may push things off a bit time-wise, you know, during their, during this recovery period. But, but it, whenever, whenever the next tranche of funds comes up for open space, we want to be ready to get our share.
And, and I misspoke. I said budget, but you would take the funds and put it to pay down the bond?
Yes.
Yes.
Have to do that.
And also, I, I mean, what great timing with the Ospac improvements. I know the residents, Councilwoman discussed it earlier in regards to the attendance at Ospac, especially with the COVID, just to have a safe entertainment space for our residents has been instrumental through this crisis. Talking to the residents that, that came out, just were just delighted to be out of their homes and, and be able to do something safely. So we really appreciate the timing on that. So.
While you bring that up, I, I wanted to mention that I had a conversation with Camille about the, the budget appropriation for $5,000 that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. She mentioned that. How you work in that?
And, and I suggested and recommended that, that, what, what we should strive to do, or what she should, could, should put together a, a request is to have a, some program, a specific program or programs sponsored by the township, so that it would be open to township residents. And, and that way, the, the community would see directly where those funds were going.
Okay. Yeah, sometimes the REC has a separate event that they sponsor versus.
That's totally separate, right?
Yeah. Okay. Good idea. And then my, my other question is in regards, I see inside repairs for the firehouses. I assume that's the bathrooms?
Bathrooms and other things that, that will, over the next couple of meetings, we'll have resolutions authorizing plans and specs for those, for those improvements.
Yeah. Okay. And I'm glad to hear in the future, there will be talks with the police, with the police station. I know from going in there many years, my mother-in-law worked there and still now, definitely needs a, a refreshing. But again, we're going with the critical needs right now. And the back orders on the vehicles, you feel, will, they give you any indication when they'll get here? Or?
The whole, you know, everything has been slowed up because of the coronavirus. Manufacturing has slowed up, everything. So even if they told me, I couldn't tell you that I was confident.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Gross. Also, again, again, thank you to Mr. Lepore for going out there.
The police department participated and REC. And so we've got a lot of participation in taking, getting pictures taken. So.
We really appreciate the snapshot. It really helps us. And I'm sure the residents appreciate as well. So with that, Madam Clerk.
If I can just have Mr. Gross stop sharing his screen for me?
Oh, yes. You have that up on the website tomorrow, Mr. Gross?
I expect to, yes.
Great. A nice job using your tech skills.
I'll tell you, it was a lot of fun, actually. Lot more fun this time. I got the newest version of PowerPoint and it was actually pretty much.
Councilperson, be very careful. He may want to raise.
Great Sunday afternoon.
Good for you. You have to teach me. Okay. We ready? All right, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Is there a motion to introduce 2610-20 bond ordinance providing various capital improvements in and by the township of West Orange appropriating $13,463,500, therefore and authorizing the issuance of $12,822,345 bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you want to move on to 2611-20?
I'm here.
No, this is the on second and final.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. So, Madam Moderator, if you could put the clock on, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience, that one of the attendees, if they would like to comment on this ordinance, now is the time to do so.
This time, anyone who used the raise your hand feature, or if you're one of our call-in attendees, it's star nine. And we have none.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt 2610-20?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Before I vote, I wonder if I could just make a statement. We sort of ran past any sort of discussion. I just want to explain to people why, briefly as I can, why I'm voting against this. Just to, to try to put this in perspective, since the beginning of 2018, which is roughly two and a half years, we have added, if we approve this, we will have added 28, near $28 million. That's a 36% increase. We mentioned the ratio a little while ago. The ratio is a measure of what our assessed value is to the amount of outstanding debt. So in roughly a decade, we've doubled the amount of our assessed value that's, is in the form of debt, which just means we're, we're more indebted. And I also feel like, given that this is such a large number of borrowing, that, and it's roughly 50% of what last year's was, I think we need to move to a, I think the council should move to a process where we identify specific projects that we want to fund and, and not just approve this sort of laundry list with these numbers. And it gives us a little bit more control, maybe a little bit more conservative or prudence. And I, and I know I constantly differ with Mr. Gross and the rest of the council on this, but I just wanted to make it clear. But I'm, I'm voting no.
That's okay, Councilman, that, that you're clearly entitled to your opinion. You know, the, the one part you leave out is the debt that we do pay down each year. So we are paying debt off as we proceed. And again, it's, you know, there's, there is an option, if any of my colleagues, you know, did want to lower this amount, they could have made a motion to do so. No one has at this point in time. So if anyone else has anything to add, you, you spoke, Councilman, I just want to give my colleagues an opportunity, our colleagues. Go, go ahead. Anyone else like Councilwoman Guarino? Do you have anything to add?
I'm in the middle of a roll call though, so.
Oh.
Yeah, we have to proceed.
All right. So I'm going to go forward, Councilwoman Matute Brown?
We're on 2611, correct, the rent control?
2610-20.
Now, we're still on 2610.
Okay.
This is to adopt 2610.
Yeah. Yeah. If you want to make a statement real quick while you're voting.
Yeah, I, I do. And, and I understand Councilwoman Kocoviac's position. I, I too agree that I would like us to move to a system where we have a long-term projected plan as to the infrastructure needs and repairs so that we can, you know, borrow better, under the circumstances, considering the need for a lot of these repairs, there is no question that, that a lot of these have to be done. There is no option for them. And also, again, looking at the environment of the low interest rates, thinking ahead, this is not just for this year, but likely for the next year as well. This is something that, while I would love to say no to, because I think it's, you know, I, I'd love to say, no, we're not going to borrow. But unfortunately, we have, we have, we have a municipality to run. We have interest, infrastructure to maintain. It is a low interest rate. We do pay, pay down capital, our bonds. And it, voting no for this means that we're not going to move forward the projects that we need to move forward to with. So I, I, you know, again, I'd love to vote no, but my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
So my vote is also yes. And I didn't mean to sound facetious before about adding a column about our period of usefulness, because I think what we're seeing in this bond ordinance is that a lot of the equipment, we are running on empty. And a lot of these upgrades do need to be made. And that was not a pun intended, Joe. But we know that we always extend our period of usefulness. So I think all of this, just showing all of the work, again, looking at 2019, I already thanked you for that compilation. I think that shows how much work got done. And it's, it was necessary to do. So my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I'll also be voting yes. You know, we have needs, facilities, studies, vehicles, studies that the fire department and the police department assess and their, and their plans. So there, there are five-year plans that each department does have. So, you know, these purchases just, you know, aren't spending sprees. They're, they're well-thought-out purchases. And again, I believe if the interest rates weren't so low, the bond wouldn't have been so high this go-around. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry to, to go bad out of order here, but I think it's good that we have healthy conversation. And we'll try not to, we'll try not to do it while we're voting next time.
I wanted to also say thank you because you always bring that up about paying down also. We do continue to borrow, but there's always that point about paying it down as well.
Great. Thank you. 2611-20?
Council President, if I could, I just wanted to clarify one thing because you always say that, that we continue to pay down. You're absolutely right. You're absolutely correct. The numbers that I use are net of paying principal and interest down. Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understands. We are continuing to pay our debts. We have five or six million, maybe seven million now in annual debt service. We're paying that down, paying off principal and interest, but we're still taking on, in this case, in two and a half years, another $28 million in debt. So I just want to make it clear, you're absolutely right. We're paying down the debt, but the debt itself is continuing to rise at a, at what I consider to be an alarming weight. That, that's all. Just want to make sure everybody understood. You're right. And I just wanted to clarify.
Thank, thank, thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, 2611-20, and ordinance amending Chapter 15, Section 157, update the township's rec control ordinance.
Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. Okay. This is on second reading. Do any members of the public would like to speak on this ordinance? Please raise your hand and our moderator will call upon you.
We don't have anyone raising their hand.
Okay, thank you. Discussion from my colleagues, Councilman Guarino?
No, rent leveling is a very important, a very important issue, particularly at these times with the economic hardships. So it's good to maintain enough. So it's good to maintain and upgrade and enforce our ordinance, particularly for rent control. So, of course, you know, I'm very much for it, that's where I started, on the rent leveling board.
Thank you. Councilman Kukoviac?
I just, again, appreciate Councilwoman Matute Brown's, what's the word I want to use, vision, that she found that, that we had, we, the council, and I guess the administration allowed, the effective time period of this ordinance to run out, so I'm glad she brought it up, and we can put it back in place.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman Matute Brown. Thank you for your work on this, also.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Kukoviac. I just wanted to let the, my council colleagues and the public know that I have spoken to Pete Smiraldo, who is the Chair of the Rent Leveling Board, and he is organizing with his commissioners, board members, to start looking at ways to be able to enforce and also highlight the fact that there is some resources that the township can, can provide, as far as guidance and enforcement with rent control. So I was very happy to have that conversation with Mrs. Smiraldo, I know it was on a weekend, but I appreciated it. So I look forward to seeing a lot more and hearing a lot more about the remedies and resources for our resident renters here in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney?
No, just glad that it was caught and renewed and adopted. Voting yes.
Great. All right, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Councilman, that wasn't the vote, right? That was just comments.
That was comments, now we're doing the vote.
Okay, Councilman Guarino? Oh, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve on second and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Councilman Guarino?
Are you muted, Councilman?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
I didn't set a good enough example just 60 seconds ago.
Like yawnin', Councilman.
Councilman, was that a yes?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, 2612-20, go ahead, I'll let, I'll let you.
Okay, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic, Subsection 7-32.1, Handicap Parking on Streets, and Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange. By adopting this ordinance, the township will establish a handicap parking stall on Watson Avenue, opposite 61 Washington Street, for the non-exclusive use of the resident who cannot have a dedicated stall in front of their home. Is there a motion to introduce on second and fi, yeah, on second and final reading?
So moved.
Okay.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance? If so, please raise your hand.
And we have no one.
Okay, thank you. And if my colleagues have any comments on this ordinance?
Council President, I just thank Lenny for the explanation of, you know, the letter that was attached to the ordinance.
Great, thank you.
Explaining the necessity of this.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Lapore. And, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt 26, what number are we on, 12-20?
So moved. Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2613-20, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification, and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing the employee status as a township employee, and under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes, so this is housekeeping for Mr. Gross. Any member of the public would like to speak on this ordinance, please raise your hand. Notify the moderator.
We have no one.
Okay, thank you. And if my colleagues have any comments or questions for this ordinance?
So, I have, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
My question with respect to the reclassification of salaries and in the legislative history, it talks about implementing the 2020 budget. Does this include, would this be inclusive of all of the promotions and is this, the promotions and special request salaries?
This, this would impact not, not promotions, because promotions are within the established scales, but these, this was include the special requests that were approved in the budget itself.
Can I answer your question?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk?
There are motion to adopt 2613-20?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. Okay, 2614-20, go ahead, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, 2614-20. I was asked to pull it from the agenda and put it on for September 22nd.
Okay.
There is a 200-foot notice that needs to be done to the property owners in the surrounding area.
Okay.
So I have to work on that tomorrow.
Okay, was that oversight that that wasn't done?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Miscommunication, but it, it'll be fine for, to carry it for two weeks.
Okay, so we're just tabling it, we don't have to vote?
No, taking action tonight, just.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Trank, Council President may ask, Mr. Trank a question, Molly's right there. Richard, does this have to go before the planning board? Does there have to be any type of recommendation since this changes to Chapter 25?
Excellent question, I'll check that in the morning, and if it does, we'll get it.
We have time to do it, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trank. Okay, we move to ordinance on first reading, there's, we do not have public comment on these, but if the council would like discussion, we can have discussion. So first is 2615-20, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 2, Section 59 of the General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange and Title, Board of the Oscar Chandler Performing Arts Center. Councilwoman Matute Brown, would you like to add to this?
Yes, so when we initially approved the ordinance, we had a discussion about adding members to include perhaps someone from the school district. That thought came because, you know, we want to be able to expose a larger demographic than, than, than we attract to OSPAC. So, and also a member of the managing production company. We didn't intend to name anyone specific. As, you know, things change, should there be a different production company or management company at the time, we wouldn't have to change the ordinance, so that's the addition that we're making to this ordinance, a representative on the board from the high school drama department, and a representative on the board from the production company, management company. That brings us to a total of seven members.
Very good, this way, there's a tiebreaker, you have someone in place.
Yes.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, any other comments from my colleagues on this? Councilman Guarino, I mean, Kukoviac, I see you raising your hand.
Yeah, yes, thank you, I just, did I just hear that we were going to put this off for a council meeting? Because we needed to give notice? But, but we're still?
That was for the other ordinance.
That was 2614-20.
Yeah, that was the, that was the, on second reading, that was the last, that was A, under second reading.
The inclusionary housing.
Yeah, now this one, this one, we could easily move forward with.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay.
But just, just wanted to say, I'm glad that we are considering adding somebody from the vendor, which was something that I had pointed out some time ago. My only question, I want to throw this out to everybody, is whether the vendor should have a vote similar to everybody else on, on the board. I think it's great to add somebody who, you know, really is in the trenches, but I'm not sure in their role as the regulated entity, and this person would be appointed by this regulated entity, whether that is appropriate to give them a vote, because they could base, they're basically, potentially could be voting on stuff that directly impacts them.
So, Councilwoman Matute Brown, you want to?
Yes, I, I would argue that I, as, as a volunteer organization, that the production company is, that I think that they should have a vote on productions that directly impact them, because they're the ones who are going to have to seek the volunteers, recoup the funds or collect funds to be able to put the production on. These things cost anywhere from $5,000 to $12,000, so I think it only fair to have them take, take a position as to whether or not they would be capable of something that the rest of the board wanted to do or didn't want to do.
So, and just to add to that, I mean, going to the volunteers, because they are the responsible party. So, if an event is voted on by that board and they can't handle that event, I think someone should be there for, for discussion. Now, they don't have to be the, the Chair of the, of the committee, which I wouldn't recommend, but, and that's something, Councilwoman, you're going to have to figure out as who, who's going to be the Chair of this committee to, to organize it.
I think that they should vote amongst themselves, the members who they would want to be the Chair. But I certainly do think that the, the production company should have a vote.
Yeah.
They know their capacity.
Okay, okay, so we, this, this, Madam Clerk, anyone else have any questions or want to ask Councilwoman Matute Brown, anything else on this?
I just want to say, I think it just makes sense, because it eliminates that additional meeting, that something comes from the board, has to go back to OSPAC, so this way, lines of communication remain open, I think it just makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
If I could, I, I, I just want to point out that the actual ordinance says that this is a regulatory body. It's supposed to be reviewing finances and reviewing specific shows for appropriateness. And again, giving the, whoever the representative is of the vendor, I think introduces the potential for conflict of interest. They can be on the board, they can provide all this expertise, all their input, but I'm not sure that it's best practice to have a representative of the entity that is being regulated have a vote on, on the actual regulatory action, that's all. Don't have to argue.
Okay. All right, thank, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to introduce 2615-20 on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes, okay, 2616-20, ordinance amending Chapter 25, Section 27.4, the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, Tree Protection and Removal Permit Required, provisions and exemptions. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Is there a motion to introduce on first reading 2616-20?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes. All right, go ahead, Councilwoman McCartney, this is, you worked.
No, thank you, thank you, but again, I will ask those questions about with the three-tree decision, is that arbitrary? There was mention about that there has to be a permit for every tree, that was built into the ordinance. There's another part about that the, one of the comments during public comment was about having a permit in hand. That's actually spelled out in the permit section A, that the permit has to be submitted prior to any work getting done. And most importantly, having a licensed tree care expert doing the work, who has to be knowledgeable, has to be registered with the town and knowledgeable of our ordinance and what needs to get done.
I just want to add, I had, Mr. Trank, you don't have to answer now, if you're not ready, but we put Mr. Trank and Mr. Lapore to task, when we did have this meeting, on, you know, we, you know, we want to know what the processes are going to be in place, and the mechanisms, because enforcement is crucial here. And so we need to know the procedures. The tree companies could register, and that's the one reason why I wanted to move forward with this tonight, and again, we could always amend it, or, or, you know, make changes by second reading. But we need to get these tree companies registered, and I think everyone on the court, or one that spoke this evening, could agree to that, so this may not be perfect right now, but I think getting these tree companies register is going to help a lot of our problems. And, Mr. Trank, did you want to add to anything right now, or? Is he still there?
Council President, I don't know if he's on or not, but if not, I'll just add a couple things, in part of which is, if this is adopted on first reading tonight, or passed on first reading tonight, introduced on first reading tonight, it should go to the planning board, I think, because it is a Chapter 25
Yeah.
ordinance, so, and there's plenty of time, so it should go to the planning board right away for their comments. But the other thing is, again, and I listened to the comments of everybody during public comment, and to the council's responses, and you know, it seems to me you don't have to, you know, let the perfect be the enemy of the good, I mean, this, you could, you can update tree ordinance every meeting or every other meeting, I mean, if you needed to, I don't think you do, but, but there's, there seemed to be general agreement, I think, with the provisions that are being offered, some people just want more. And that's fine, but you don't have to do everything all at once. If you waited until you had a perfect ordinance, you, you would never pass an ordinance.
Council President?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Ms. Akizer. Councilwoman McCartney, can I, can I add to the list of questions then, and you're looking, because I have to agree, and thinking back, you know, having just passed this OSPAC amendment, it's only, it's only, you know, proof of something that we've done before, we've passed an ordinance that we knew that we were going to amend, and I'm hopeful that, you know, we can do better, I mean, there are some things in here that I agree with. Registering someone who is licensed and not just certified is really a big, big step. And, a couple of things, I do agree with Councilwoman Kukoviac's position on the, you know, that we should not allow any retroactive permits, and I know that that is going to really be impacted with whatever the enforcement mechanism is. And then, there is no language here that talks about township-owned trees. So, I think that, I know that when our, our group with West Orange was attending these meetings with the Environmental Commission, one of the things that was discussed was having a tree commi- one of the things that was discussed was having a tree commission. I don't know if that's something that is, is still up for discussion. But I think that when we, when we're talking about permits for residents, that, that is enforceable, but how do we protect our own trees? The township. So I think that, that might be something to, that needs discussion, you know. Admittedly, I have not attended meetings, I don't know if you've had those discussions, but just in reading through the ordinance. Yeah.
Specifically.
But maybe that's something that, you know, we can add. So I, I am going to, at this moment, reverse what I stated before. I will not pull the ordinance. I think that it is important to have, you know, start the process. And I think that it's the step in the right direction. But certainly look forward to adding and amending as we go forward.
Great, thank you.
That'll be a work in progress, so.
Council President?
Go, go ahead, Councilwoman Garina.
What I want to say is too, and the whole idea is that it's, it's a good ordinance, it needs to move forward. But I say, there are pieces that need to be adjusted and amended. And like Mr. Kizer said, you know, we can amend this ordinance down the road. Particularly, like I said, the three trees. Because every year it just grows and grows and grows. And I see people do it. So, you know, we need to look at where we're gonna stop it. So, but.
Great, all right, thank, thank you, thank you all. So we had already voted. So now we're going to move to 2617-20. I'll let you read this one, Madam Clerk, I'm getting tired.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 25 land use regulations of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange to implement recommendations of the master plan reexamination. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Absolutely, yes, someone? Second.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Garina?
Yes.
Councilman Krokowiak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Teut Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes, okay, Councilwoman McCartney?
Please, thank you.
You're up again.
Yes, because again, over many months, the planning board has been discussing these amendments to update our sustainable checklist. And though we make these recommendations for applicants, incorporating this checklist into our master plan, we can strongly recommend these recommendations and hopefully, and comply with. So the recommendations, let me back up, was for cool and green roofs, solar energy systems, and electrical, electric vehicle infrastructure, private and public properties. So having that in place in an ordinance, we can have the applicants comply with that. There were green infrastructures, sustainable designs for applications that come before the planning board. We voted, the planning board voted unanimously to add these sections to our ordinance. They're all spelled out.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Does anyone have any questions for Councilwoman McCartney at this point?
Again, Richard, I think this is also Chapter 25. Well, this is already coming, I meant to ask the clerk, did you, were we supposed to receive a letter from the planning board? A letter of recommendation from the planning board?
I, yeah, I would assume so, yes.
No, but this is part of the master plan. So this is all the recommendations. Mr. Greigle worked with us to draft this. So this doesn't have to go back, but.
Okay.
I, I do have a question, actually. And I don't know if it's for Councilwoman McCartney or Mr. Trank, since you're here. I do recall, and it's been some time since the updates with respect to the master plan and the conversations of the marijuana dispensary, the medicinal marijuana dispensary. That's not included in the definitions here. Did I, did I miss that? Was that excluded? Was that a decision to not include? I know we did not pass the ordinance, it is something that we should revisit, but I didn't see any language to medicinal marijuana dispensaries in here. I could have missed it. But I specifically recall that, that was part of.
It was a discussion.
There was a part of a recommendation that Paul Greigle made.
I don't remember seeing it.
It's, but it's not in here.
I'll check with Mr. Greigle, so that by second reading, we'll clarify that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. Move on, everybody good to move on? Okay, we have 2618-20, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, traffic subcession 7-32.2, restriction, restrictive parking of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange, 179 High Street. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
There a motion to introduce on first reading?
Someone?
Someone?
Councilman Garina?
Yes.
Councilman Krokowiak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Teut Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Castellino?
Yes, and this ordinance creates, creates a street handicap parking stall adjacent to 179 High Street for the exclusive use of the resident at the mentioned addresses who have a disabled person's ID issued by the Motor Vehicle Commission. If anyone likes to come forward at the next, on second reading, they may do so. Okay, with that, we do have quite a few ABC matters this evening to go over. We first have, does anybody have anything for pending matters tonight? Everybody good?
Council President, I, I think we should discuss this investigation that we discussed extensively last, last time. We've gotten a letter from Mr. Dillon. And it might be time to either discuss that or, and/or discuss where to go from here.
Okay, um, so with that, Mr. Trank? You're still available. Yeah, we, we could, did, first of all, did all my colleagues read through the letter? And did they have any questions on the letter? Okay.
I read through it, I have a ton of questions.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on the letter?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman, don't.
It's time. I'm not sure if this would be the appropriate time to raise the issues that I'm, that I want to follow up on from the letter. By the way, it was, it was a good letter, provided a great deal of information. And I'm grateful that Mr. Dillon did that. I'm sorry that he felt like he was being accused of unprofessionalism. I don't think anybody on the council intends that at all. We're just, we're presented with a, with an issue that we have to go, go through. So, but what I wanted to say is that a lot of the questions that, a lot of the questions that I have from Mr. Dillon's letter probably have to do with him responding directly to the council. And so I'm just wondering if it's useful to go through all my questions when there's, Mr. Dillon is not here to answer the questions. And plus, we also have the other part of the equation, which is what, what Ms. Bennett has provided or has been spoken to and that sort of thing, so.
So, um, okay. So I guess, so I guess the question should be, if everyone else is, doesn't have any questions for Mr. Dillon or everybody is satisfied with the explanation, then maybe you could call up Mr. Dillon and have a conversation with them.
Council President, can I?
Go, go ahead. Go, go ahead, go ahead.
Quite frankly, the, what was alleged here is a lot more than unprofessionalism. It was misconduct in office, I think. I mean, I, I'm, I'm just amazed. But I, I think the question is, does the council as a body want to conduct this investigation or not? I mean, take a vote. I mean, this is.
Okay, so, so what I'll do is I'll go through a roll call. If anybody else would like to move forward. So just so the public knows, there was some accusations made. We had asked a tax assessor to give an explanation why there was an error on a property. We got a two-page thorough report, and I'll take it from there. So I know I personally am satisfied. Council President, I'm sorry, Councilman Garina?
President, if I could, before we start.
Excuse me, Councilman, I'm polling. I am, you could say, you could say whatever you like, but I want to, I want to see where my colleagues are on this.
We didn't need to take a vote, because we were going to move ahead with the investigation. And you.
Only, only if there was support. We moved ahead with the report.
So we have this letter and report. You also, you also told Mr. Kizer to reach out to Ms. Bennett. Told her at the last meet, you told him at the last meeting.
Well, Ms. Bennett had, Ms. Bennett had reached out to us with a very long explanation, and I read through her explanation. I, I'm asking my colleagues now if they read through all the materials and if they would want to move forward, Councilman, so.
Let me.
Again, you're, you're one, you're one on a body of five. So I want to see where they're at, and we can move forward.
Council, Council President, I just want to add in response to, I don't recall any, I don't recall anybody instructing me to, to contact Mrs. Bennett. And frankly, if the council.
Would you like me to give you the citation, the timestamp of when she told you to do that?
You can give me whatever you want.
But it's.
I, I indicated that she could present anything she wanted to present, but I'm not going to interview her. I'm not conducting this investigation. And I don't think an investigation needs to be conducted. But it's not up to me, it's up to the council.
That's exactly right, it's not up to you.
Right.
At the last council.
And it's up to the council. So Councilman, let me call the council. Can you please be patient?
We're moving ahead, and the fact.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I do have to interrupt. We cannot, when multiple people are talking, there's no sound that happens.
You agreed with it.
There's no sound that happens when multiple people talked over each other.
I'll find the video and show you where you told Mr. Kizer to reach out to Ms. Bennett. And it, I didn't even hear it.
Okay, okay, Councilman, I, I, if I said that, Ms. Bennett provided multiple emails to, I believe we were all copied on with very detailed information. And I appreciate her doing that. And I read through all that, I read the report. So now I want to hear what my, you have, we have three other colleagues we need to hear from, Councilmen, so let me hear from them. Councilman Garina, where do you stand with this situation?
So I was fine with the answers on both levels and the information.
Thank you. Councilwoman Teut Brown?
Unmuted, okay, yes. So I, I, I want to say that I did read Mr. Dillon's and, and report and account, including the specific response to my question during the council meeting where I asked, had this happened to anyone in the past? If it's an, if it's a singular issue, I, I would have pretty grave concerns. Mr. Dillon did respond that it has happened in the past. He did attach some documentation for a resident wherein it did happen. He also stated that it could have been an error in his office, but also an error on the part of the vendor that the township uses. And I, I don't have his email right in front of me to tell you what the vendor name is. I can look it up, but I thought in that case, it, to, to start an investigation, how, how, I just, I don't see how that would play itself out. So if it's an error on the part of, if it's a human error on the part of the township, you know, someone in the office, or a human error in, on the part of the vendor, I, I, I don't see how we can pinpoint where, and again, I, obviously, I'm not an investigator. I, I just don't, again, if it was one incident, if it was an isolated incident, if it was just Ms. Bennett, I'd probably be more inclined to say, let's exhaust some resources to do an investigation. But it wasn't a lone incident. Mr. Dillon did provide copies of tax cards where it happened on a separate occasion to someone else. And for me, as far as I'm concerned, I felt that the explanation was a reasonable one. It was either his office or the vendor. I, I don't think it a wise resource in this case to, to hire an investigation firm to, to do an investigation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And just to note, too, the other property mentioned, the similarity I saw was both properties had carriage houses on them. So if that maybe triggered something with an error that, you know, again, that wasn't, you know, deep, it was mentioned that they both had carriage houses on it. Well, actually, the one mistake was a carriage house. And I asked if the other property had a carriage house, and, and it did. Councilman McCartney?
So Council President, my recollection was that we asked for a request for the tax assessor to provide a report. And I believe that that letter answered all the questions that were raised. I don't see how pursuing any type of investigation is going to uncover anything else. I think in the tax assessor's letter, there was also additional detailed information, further steps that he took to be sure that he did address every question that came up. So I don't see moving, I don't see the purpose of moving forward with an investigation. He did, I did see your email about a carriage house. And he did respond in the last paragraph in the letter to Councilwoman Teut Brown's question. So I, I think he answered everything that we needed to, we needed to know.
And one of my other follow-up questions was, was there a pool on the property? And that, that answer was yes, so, which complicates the assessments as well. So with that being said, from what I'm hearing from my colleagues, that we will not move further with any other information, that the majority of the council is satisfied. And.
President, Council President?
Councilman, I'm gonna let you have the floor, but please be respectful of the decision your colleagues have just made. Go ahead.
So first of all, I'll point out that a careful reading of the letter shows that Mr. Dillon did not answer Councilwoman Teut Brown's question. In fact, he didn't even say how many problems he had in that specific year. He used examples, he didn't explain the examples, but he threw out two more examples. Let me just go to you, to some of the other questions that came in my mind in reading Mr. Dillon's letter. We clearly, we as the council clearly need to learn more about the system and systems that he uses, particularly its search capabilities, and how those work with the property record cards. It's, I can't understand how it is that he can tell the day that someone raised the assessment on this property, how he can't tell when the day he raised this assessment, when he knows the day that it was lowered. We don't even know who is authorized to change assessments. Is it just Mr. Dillon, or is it anybody else?
Mr. Gross, can you answer that question?
I think it's fair to say that, that multiple people within an office or with, or are, are vendors are in a position to put that kind of data in place. Ultimately, and, and Kevin will tell you that ultimately, it's up, it's his responsibility to review that and to make sure that, that it's right. And, and, you know, just like it's my responsibility for anything that goes on in my office that I may not do myself. So I, I, I think, I read the letter, I was satisfied with it. I, you know, I, I think if Mr. Krokowiak, you know, has questions, maybe you can write them and send them to, to Kevin. If no one else has, that, you know, may, maybe, you know, those, those questions are certainly not going to be answered here tonight in public. To the extent that they're out there, they will be perceived, they will be perceived as a, a, some type of an attack. And I know that's not Mr. Krokowiak's intention, but it will be perceived that way. So I, I really think that the best way to proceed from this point forward for Mr. Krokowiak to get the answers to his questions is, is to have an interaction with, with the assessor himself. If he doesn't want to. If he doesn't want to call him, he can write, write an email to him and give that to him because this, this, this public display does, does not solve any of the questions that may be lingering for Mr. Koviac or if anybody else has those questions.
President, can I have the floor back now?
Councilman, you could have the floor back, but here, here's the situation. So why don't you state your questions and send them on in? The rest of, be respectful of the majority of this council is okay to move forward. So I have no problem with you getting answers to your questions. You're entitled to them. So why don't you craft them in a way where you could just, you know, you could have answers as exposed, because sometimes you have the tendency to not be clear on the exact question you want answered. So maybe if you just, like, make it for Mr. Dillon, like, the, you know, like concise questions for him.
Thank you.
And then he could get, hopefully, get you the answers.
I continue as I, at first, I offered to do that, and, and then I said, no, this is not the appropriate time. We should hear what Ms. Bennett has to say about what Mr. Dillon said. Because of course, I understand, Mr. Gross, that you, you think some people are going to consider this an attack on Mr. Dillon. I think there are also some people who may consider, and they'll be wrong, that there was an attack by Mr. Dillon on Ms. Bennett.
Okay, okay. So Councilman, what happens on, I don't, I don't know where that came from because I didn't see any emails. Ms. Ms. Bennett clearly sent emails to us.
Would you please stop interrupting me when I have the floor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
And I appreciate Mr. Gross's advice, but as far as I know, he does not have a role in this.
Well, I certainly have a role to provide advice to the council. So with all due respect, Councilman, it's certainly within my purview to give advice for, based on my professional opinions and experience as to the best way to get the answers to your questions without causing irreparable harm to staff members.
The purpose of what I was doing was to read the questions that I got after reading through the letter four or five times before I was interrupted. So we know who can change the assessments. And it seems to be that Mr. Dillon is telling us that the system does not track the day that assessments are changed. And he tells us when he raised the assessment, but he can't tell us when he reduced it. He says he couldn't find any record of that increase in 2016 on any other property record card. So in other words, what he's saying is that we, he made a change, thinking that it was somebody else's assessment, but he can't even tell us who the other person's assessment that he changed, because maybe they're being damaged too. Does that mean that someone else is apparently unaware that their assessment changed and he, and Mr. Dillon has no way of figuring that out?
Well, that's an assumption on your part, Councilman. So ask the quest, ask, list your question to Mr. Dillon and we'll find out the answer. I mean, there's assumptions you're making here, which is fine, and you should get the answers.
We're not going to be able to answer those questions, so those are questions for Kevin.
Mr. Dillon said in his letter, please stop interrupting me. It seems to me that he should be able to find the record for whoever other property owner got the incorrect assessment change. If, if, if it wasn't, if he was intending to do somebody else's and he can't remember, then what about this other person? When he talked about the other people that he contacted or the other people that are in similar situations, did he contact any of those people to explain to them about the overcharge? Did he offer to give them money back for their overcharge? There's nothing in the letter about any of that.
It wasn't the issue.
Of course it is, because of cour, please, stop interrupting me. Would you please write down your questions or your comments and wait for me to yield the floor?
Councilman, you need to calm down because you're, you're blowing this way out of proportion.
Right. All we're trying to work with you. Present your questions to Kevin.
All right, Councilwoman, I'll.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but this is out of control.
This is all intended for you guys to stop me from speaking, and our ordinance is crystal clear that if I'm on point, you can interrupt me.
Councilman, you can say anything that you need to say, but it is also important that you understand the implications or that the council understand the implications of how this is going to be perceived and, 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 and.
Please.
Given, given, excuse me, given the fact, given the fact that I know you honestly want to know the answers to your questions, the best way for you to get them is to ask them of Mr. Dillon.
Stop interrupting me. Please stop interrupting me.
Mr. Gross is only trying to help you, Councilman, so if you want to speak, I'm going to time you five minutes, say whatever you want.
If I need help, I will ask for it. If I need help from you or Mr. Gross or anyone else on this call, I will ask for His office gets a call about this assessment. It takes him two weeks or so to research and then to lower it below the original and you, and he never contacted the property owner. So I'd like to know in these other instances, what he did to settle those problems and whether he called them or not. Because if he treated them differently than Ms. Bennett, I think we need to find out more about that. And what's really disturbing to me about this is that people's assessments can be changed and there is no audit trail. There is.
Let him speak, Mr. Gross. Let him get, ask all his questions, write them down, let him finish, please. We need to move on to the ABC hearing. Go ahead, Councilman.
How often does it happen that he has wrongly changed an assessment that he can't figure out what happened? I think that's a really important question. When he changed this assessment, he saved this taxpayer, Ms. Bennett, the property owner, more than $4,000 a year. So in two tax years, they were going to start making more than they were overcharged. Does everybody realize that? She got paid back, I think she said $6,000. Lowering this assessment by over $100,000 saved her, the property owners, about $4,000 a year. So in a year and a half, she'd already made back all of the overcharging that Mr. Dillon was supposed to pay back, which she was just going to keep on getting it. Do you realize, because they changed the assessment, didn't pay her the money that she wanted, that, that she was owed, he lowered the assessment so that every year going forward, she was going to be making money off of this at the expense of the town and the, and the rest of the taxpayers? I, I, I just wonder if that's what he did with the other people that he used as an example. He, he said that he only made one mistake and that Ms. Bennett misspoke or was incorrect when she said she, he made two mistakes. But right before he says that in the letter, he says, quote, "When I looked at the tax records, I thought the assessment had been increased from $700,000 to $806,700, an increase of $106,700. It was brought to my attention by the senior assessing clerk that the change was actually from $734,600 to $806,700, a difference of $72,100. I had forgotten about making the adjustment from $734,600 to $700,000 in 2018." Ms., Councilwoman Matu Brown asked him about whether there are any other examples, but of mistaken assessments. He gave two examples, but he didn't say that that was exhaustive. He didn't give us any from 2017 or 2018. He didn't give us any of the reasons for those mistakes. He didn't say how he discovered those mistakes and did he have a clear audit trail for them. He mentioned that he filed a correction of errors with the New Jersey Tax Court on one of the cases. So I'd really like to know what documentation and rationale he has to provide when he does that. And again, did he reimburse these other two taxpayers for the overcharge and how? And did he even bother to connect, contact them? Because remember, Ms. Bennett says that she wasn't contacted until she found the discrepancy even later. Mr. Dillon does not say in his letter that he talked with her before she contacted his And those are just the, just, those are just the ones I saw, just briefly looking over like three times. So I'm, I, I yield the floor. I, I, I think it was very clear at the last council meeting that we were going to move forward on trying to find out what the facts were. And then to hear this tonight where the other four council members say, oh, they've heard everything they wanted, after I, I thought I'd save time and not read my questions. You know, there's nothing I can do if you want to shut it down except to point to what was discussed last, last week, last council meeting.
Council President.
Go ahead, Mr. Kizer. Wait, excuse me, excuse me, Councilman Koviac, you're done. You yielded? Okay, thank you. Council, Mr. Kizer, go ahead.
I just, look, I, I, I look at this from a commonsensical standpoint. If every time some officer or an employer or whatever made a mistake, we had to have a council investigation, you wouldn't get anything else done. Council investigations are serious matters. Generally, they, they, you can investigate criminal matters, and frankly, what's been alleged could be a criminal matter. And, and so that's just out of the question. But it just seems to me that there's nothing incredible about what happened here that would justify a council investigation. But if you want to do it, you can do it, but you're going to have to hire a lawyer, hire an investigator. It's going to be a long process with hearings and so forth. Subpoenas issued and all that kind of stuff. And I'm just not, I don't know why you would want to do that in a case, in a case like this. But it's, it's up to you guys, you know, but I can't do it. I'm not going to do it. Only Mr. Trank's going to do it. You're going to have to hire somebody.
But more, more, just to add on to that, this is Richard Trank, Town Attorney. The bottom line of the story is, Mr. Dillon has a state certification. He has served this town with distinction for many decades. To the extent that anyone has an issue, they have a right to, to report anything they want to the Department of Community Affairs, the Attorney General, and the Esq County Prosecutor's Office. And, and so to take from a three-page letter where he provides the explanation and to try to extrapolate or pull it apart does not serve anyone where we have totally remedied the issue. The minute Mr. Dillon said, put a resolution on with the refund, that's what the law department did, the council approved it, and there's nothing more here. So if you feel there is and you want to report, Mr. Dillon, you have every right to do it, just like you can report any of us. And certainly, people do all the time, and if they feel there's something improperly, no one is taking away anyone's rights to do that, First Amendment or otherwise. So again, that, that's the long and the short of this.
Council President, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I, I, I just feel I, I should just, just clarify because I, I was present at the last council meeting, and I did say that I was interested in finding out about an investigation. I also said that I would, I supported your request of a report from Mr. Dillon so that we could have his account since we already had Ms. Ms. Bennett's account. When he provided that, I also asked for them to provide if there was any other instances where this happened. One of the other attachments that he provided and his responses to us was a resolution dated October 24th, 2017, where Council President at the time was Councilman Koviac, where the same instance happened. There was a resolution where ASI inadvertently raised the assessment for 2017 for, for Block 58.02, Lot 3. And, and this resolution was passed by the council, October 24th, 2017. Councilman Koviac was then council president. Was there an investigation done for this as well? I, I, I just don't want, and I am not going to let the public sit here and listen to something that is not true. It's not that all of a sudden I don't want an investigation. I am satisfied that there have been other instances, resolutions have been passed by this council, by Ms., Councilman Koviac as president in the past. If this was an isolated incident, that would be different. However, I am satisfied with all of the information that has been provided. And I think that because there, there was some restitution here, I, if there is anything further, I have to agree with our township attorney, then file a complaint. I just don't feel that we need to further exert any resources that are textile resources for an investigation. We didn't do it in 2017, or did we? Did the council investigate in 2017 when that resolution was passed for, for an instance where it happened then?
Absolutely not.
Okay. All right. I, I just want to be clear to the public that it, this is not about all of a sudden not wanting to. I was very clear in saying that I supported a report. I received that report. I read it carefully and clearly, and that's my position. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any of my other colleagues have anything to add to this conversation?
No, that was the same comment. That was the same, my same response. Nothing further.
Okay. Councilman Koviac, you raise your hand. Please keep it short.
Yeah, Councilwoman Matu Brown brings up the 2017 resolution. I suggest that she goes back and watches that council meeting and the next council meeting to see that nobody raised allegations of potential wrongdoing. That's it. That's the difference.
Okay, thank you. With being said, I think this closes out our discussion on pending matters. And we move, we will need a motion to close out the general meeting and to go into our ABC hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
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 On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, so West Orange, we are now back from the ABC hearing to the general meeting. And just like to inform you that our next meeting is Tuesday, September 22nd at 6:30 PM. Instructions will be posted on the website, so stay tuned. I, I don't, you know, we, we'll have to discuss maybe a next pending matters. We'll see where we're at if we want to move forward into having public meetings again. So we just have to wait and see where we're at. But right now, the 22nd will be a virtual meeting. So with that, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn for the evening.
Don't move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, West Orange.
Good night.
Hi, thank you.
Stay safe, stay well and stay safe.
Sorry. When I end the meeting, it will end for the meeting, both for those on camera and off camera, no other business will be conducted. Have a great night, everybody.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.